President.
Morales.
President.
This is as far as I'm here.
Foley.
Here.
Yamas.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Cardo.
President. Okay, thank you all. The meeting has then been called to order for September 22nd, 2020. If you're able to stand, please do so and stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Sharina Tengsen, alum of Evergreen Valley College Women in Gender Studies Department, and Councilmember Arenas will tell us more.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm really excited to share this song with you this afternoon. It's from Evergreen Valley College Women in Gender Studies Program. And before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and mourn the loss of justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. But more importantly, we must remember to celebrate the doors she opened for women and men during her time in public service and as a female leader and various of us who are here and many of those who are out in different spheres of service that we carry the torch in her memory and continue to fight for justice in our respective roles. My district is also home to many amazing women and this year making the centennial anniversary of women's right to vote. We've been celebrating our women's suffrage through our leading ladies effort and it's highlighting women leaders and district agents. So I really am excited about that. Please look at our social media for that. But for today, in spirit of recognizing strong women who keep the world turning, the Evergreen Valley College Women in Gender Studies has recorded this beautiful video and dedicates the song to our brave female first responders who have worked tirelessly through this pandemic. The song is called "Superwoman," performed by Sharina Tengsen, featuring inspiring quotes and powerful images of EBC alum and students. And so I just want to thank Alba Padilla, Marjorie Clark, Sharina Tengsen, who's a senior, Diamond Thomas, Van An Fan, and Samar Roble and the EBC Women in Gender Studies Program for their work on this invocation, as well as all the women on council. Thank you. Councilwomen Arenas, for this honor, we're featuring the EBC Women in Gender Studies Program. And we would like to dedicate this song to all the women who are first responders. And all my sisters coming together saying, yes, I will. Yes, I can.
Thank you, Sharina. Councilmember? Would you like to add anything further?
No, just one last thank you to EBC Women in Gender Studies Program. And this song is also in honor of all the women on council. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Sharina, for your talents and for all those who participated in sharing the message. All right, we're on to Orders of the Day. Does anyone have any changes to the printed agenda? Okay, appears we still have a challenge with the translation.
Okay, we were just testing it. I told them to stop talking.
Okay. Tony, are we okay to proceed? I don't want to interrupt. There are those who, depending on the translation, aren't able to hear. I just don't know.
I think we are with this part because it's really basic. I would like to try to get it fixed before. I've asked him to update his software. So let's see if the software is the issue, but I think we can go ahead.
Great, thank you. All right, on to the Orders of the Day. Are there anyone with changes to the printed agenda? I'm not seeing any hands. One person in the public would like to... Nope. Okay. Okay then, Orders of the Day, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tess Woodman-C, did you want to speak specifically on Orders of the Day?
Oh, thank you, Mayor LaCarter. You saved yourself because I was cursing you out for that because I really felt bad the way this happens. Yes, what happens with my phone is that the hand goes on and off. You need to know that, okay? Because you're leading these meetings and we have very little way of communicating with you. And my hand goes on and off. So you coming back to me makes me feel very appreciated because, you know, it went off and then when it came back on, you responded. And I'm having a lot of trouble with city council. My councilmember Deb Davis ignores me when I go to her community meetings. This is really... Okay, I'm dealing with the agenda, okay? What happened now? What did you do?
You're only speaking on Orders of the Day.
Okay, I'm speaking. Okay, I'll get to Orders of the Day. Okay, thank you. So my Order of the Day is that we got a message from Prince Charles of Wales. Prince Charles of Wales. We got a message from him today that we have 10 years to reduce our fossil fuel to net zero.
Would you like to speak on Orders of the Day?
I know. The Order of the Day, Mayor LaCarter, is busy as usual, cannot go...
Okay, Blair Beekman, speaking specifically on Orders of the Day.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to thank yourselves for allowing the concept of allowing public comment on specific items to Orders of the Day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beekman. All right, on the motion, let's vote. Oh, is there a motion? Forgive me.
Yes, I made the motion.
Yes. Okay, good. Let's vote, Tony.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rosa.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Yamas.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
LaCarter.
Aye. Okay, on to closed session report. We did not have our standard closed session, so I'm assuming there's nothing to report. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, on to 3.1, reported city manager. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Start off as we typically do with our unsung hero. I think we have a slide. Today, we're going to recognize the work of Carlo Fregosa. Carlo is a maintenance assistant in the Department of Transportation. And actually, he's a relatively new employee with us. He only started with the city six months before COVID. And so Carlo has had to not only learn a new job, but do it in a way where he's socially distanced from his coworkers and all the new protocols that we have in place. And he's just done a wonderful job. He maintains a very positive attitude and is adaptable and has excelled as a member of our sewer team. And I think Carlo's supervisor put it best. Sean McNair says, "When I work with employees like Carlo, I see a bright future for us all." So well said, Sean, and congratulations, Carlo. Thank you for all the work you're doing and thanks for coming to work for us at the city of San Jose. Okay, so today, we're going to get into an update. We've got an update from KIP on just the standard EOC update and stage seven and where we're at. We'll have Kelly give an update on city services, the city services that we have in motion and our plan for moving forward with additional city services. And then Ben and Jackie will give a quick update on state and federal action on evictions. And then Carolina will give an update on strategic communications plan for at-risk communities. So I'm going to pass it off to KIP.
Thank you, Dave. Kip Hartness, Deputy City Manager and Emergency Operations Center Director. So as Dave mentioned, just a quick update on where we are. It's now been 243 days since we initiated our pandemic response here in the city. And we have, as a nation, just passed the grim milestone of 200,000 deaths nationally and an all-too-painful 297 deaths locally, with 109 patients struggling with COVID-19 in local hospitals as we speak. Continued high unemployment, economic distress, all of which are, of course, disproportionately impacting our Black, Latinx, and Native Americans as individuals and communities, both across the nation and here in San Jose specifically. Within the new California blueprint for a safe economy, Santa Clara County is at this moment still in Tier Two, that red tier, indicating a continued substantial risk level, but allowing for the opening of a wider range of businesses than was possible during the full shelter in place. There are 21 days, as a reminder, in between changes in levels. So it'll be a while for us before we transition to the next, assuming that we're able to get within the next threshold. And we're fairly close on many of the numbers, but we need to stay there for an extended period of time. So within the city's context, that puts us now at stage seven. And we've realigned our own pandemic plan so that it is both color and stage aligned with the state tiers so there'd be at least a little bit less confusion on where we are and where we aren't. This stage seven allows us to continue our reopening process, which you'll hear more about in greater detail from Kelly later in the presentation. From the EOC, since we last updated you, our work continues to slow and reduce the spread of COVID-19 and support our most vulnerable, including a few highlights coordinated and distributed a continuing 2.3 million meals a week with no reported gaps. Our Brunel Emergency Interim Housing Site has come online. There are currently about 31 people there with folks moving in daily. Ultimately, 78 folks will be living in that site and then two other sites. This first site for singles, the additional site for couples, and then families at Evans Lane and Ruferi will add a total of 200 beds, the emergency interim housing. I was actually out at the site recently and it's a really, really well-done site if you haven't had a chance to go out and visit. We have now opened a total of eight PRNS pod sites as childcare facilities and school day support. And we'll be preparing to scale that up to as many as 24, depending on enrollment and demand. During the periods of poor air quality due to the wildfire smoke, more than a week ago, we opened experimentally a couple of clean air centers, providing PPE and supplies to those who needed a break and some fresh air, quite literally, and have refined the protocols and procedures around that so that we will have that in place going forward. We finalized and sent out a Greater Downtown Economic Recovery Task Force comment letter to state officials and continue to be actively engaged in advocating from San Jose on the potential for a fourth stimulus package at the federal level, should there ever be federal action. In addition, you'll hear today more about the Coronavirus Relief Fund for local assistance and our Community and Economic Recovery Branch. In addition to the cash assistance that you'll hear more detail about, has worked with San Jose Clean Energy to develop a framework for an electrical bill relief program for people who are members of San Jose Clean Energy. We've provided several thousand copies of our local assistance trifold brochures in multiple languages for distribution by the county's Business Empowerment Team. We've also coordinated with the county on public health order compliance by integration with the county's compliance task force. Currently, the county has been handling the vast majority of complaints and concerns. Finally, our virtual meeting engagement team continues to train employees around the city on how to conduct virtual community meetings. So far, we've conducted 11 trainees and trained over 160 city employees. We are also partnering with the city clerk to develop a citywide virtual community meeting calendar so that people can be involved in the decisions that affect their lives. So let's dive right into city services update with Kelly Parmley, the Assistant Director of Human Resources, who's been leading our Powered by People 2.0 Task Force as its director, which you heard about the overall effort last time. We'll dive a little We'll dive a little bit in greater depth into the opening up of services. So as a preface to this, I want to... I have three framing comments before turning it over to Kelly and team. One is, as we've looked at the data, we realized we've never really stopped. Two is that it's not easy to reopen services, and three is that we're still in a public health emergency. So while we're talking about reopening services, the reality is most of our work actually never stopped. Some highly visible services, such as parking enforcement, were suspended, but the core work of the city continued, if unseen, from the sewer cleaning, as was highlighted in 3.1, to recycle pickup and everything in between. For the most part, when you look at the numbers of employees, we either continued providing essential services in a different way or were redeployed to the emergency response and new services like feeding the hungry. Second point, as we seek to reopen the services we did shut down, we are finding that resuming services is a lot harder than simply stopping them. Even if you figure out what works for the individual service, it may not work for related or adjacent services. It's sort of like trying to figure out one side of a Rubik's Cube and solving for the color red won't allow you to solve for the other sides. As an example, we now have significant new constraints on buildings and facilities with social distancing requirements that we didn't have to worry about before. For example, elevator capacity in multi-story buildings such as City Hall is now almost always the critical bottleneck in how many people we can return to work effectively in that location. And so we have to balance out one service against the other and not simply take into account, can we open this service by itself? And then finally, third point is, we do continue to be in this public health emergency, and there is still substantial risk, as indicated by the tier that we're in, and we need to meet our responsibility to keep both our workforce and the public safe, all of which involve looking at all of these services together rather than individually. Kelly's going to walk you through our current plan and the team's work on this in much more detail, so I'll pass it over to her. Kelly?
Thank you, Kip. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kelly Parmley, Assistant Director for HR and also leading the Powered by People 2.0 team out of the EOC. Just to give you a little preview of where I'm going with the update, I just want to connect how this expansion and reopening of services is related to a prior presentation I gave around Powered by People 2.0. I'll give you a bit of a timeline going back to shelter in place up to present in terms of what we've done with expansion and reopening of services. And then talk a little bit about what it takes to create a safe workplace in terms of people and process, and then just a little bit about kind of what's next in terms of stage seven and beyond. Go to the next slide, Kip. So if you can jump right to the circle, this may be familiar to you from my last presentation, but I think it's worth putting forward again. Priority number one is a safe workplace, and that includes employees and the public as we have more services expand or reopen. Two major pillars supporting a safe workplace are effective teams and how do we manage that and predominantly remote environment, but also teams who are working in the field and in city spaces. And then how do we use opportunities and innovations around drive to digital to also support that? And then all of the items around the circle give a sense of all the things that we're thinking about in terms of supporting a safe workplace and also being able to plan and support for the expansion and reopening of services. And from that work, if you go to the next slide, we came up with four objectives. Oh, sorry, I forgot about the teams. In order to do this response to recovery, that meant for those four objectives, we launched four teams, and there are more folks behind those, but also created a governance structure in which we could vet and share with folks what we were doing and things that we were struggling with. And so the next slide shows the four objectives, and the one I want to focus on is safe workplace because the Safe Workplace Team is handling a whole lot in order to support both the reopening and expansion of services, but also planning to get ahead, to try to get ahead of the curve in terms of putting both facilities and safety protocols in place. We'll focus on that for now. I want to go back in time. Next slide. I mean, go right to the timeline. So back March 17th, the shelter in place. Prior to shelter in place, each of the departments submitted something called a continuity of services plan or something we affectionately in the Emergency Operations Center called COOPS. From the collection of information from those departments, in addition to that vetting things with the EOC leadership, we identified about 265 city services. Those, and those I just want to say in terms of city services for clarification, are a range of things. Everything from programs to administrative functions to some of the more visible broad city services that Kip mentioned. But as we moved about 2,400 full-time employees almost overnight, we were able to sustain many of what we had previously identified as non-essential services, which is a bit of a misnomer, and were able to continue to provide many city services up to almost about 75% of our services in the combination of folks working remotely or in the field or in a city space. In addition to that, from the roadmap, as many of you already know, we launched nine new EOC services. And again, those are of different size and scope. So as we moved further into stage five, into April, May, and June, on the next slide, in this period of time, we were able to learn a lot, both in terms of science, guidance from the county, best practices. The safety team spent a lot of time researching and using consulting support about what we could do and how we needed to do it. And while it was a bit of a messy time for folks in terms of what are the best practices for codes of safe practice and what do we need to do from a facilities perspective, I couldn't believe the number of conversations around which piece of plexiglass to use and which was most appropriate for an environment. But in the process of doing that and learning more, 12 city services were reopened for expansion, and you can see those identified to the left. And again, they vary in grain size in terms of scope and depth. We were able to open or expand in many instances 12 more. And at that point in time, we'd stood up another service in the EOC related to childcare and summer camps. That doesn't mean that they were fully deployed or implemented, but we began thinking and planning for those. In addition to that, I think it's notable that almost 600 employees have been reassigned to the EOC, and that includes in the leadership branch as well as the folks working out in the field. So that was a lot in April, May, and June. So if we go into stage six, we get to also put a lot more in place to be able to feel comfortable and confident in safety practices and facilities modifications. In this case, we reopened or expanded 13 more city services. The EOC worked on digital inclusion and a lot of activity around beautify San Jose. A couple of things of note, the Police Administration Building, the Police Communication Building. I'll just note where a lot of work in terms of making sure that that could be modified and the right safety practices put in place. But we are also dealing with how do we do a little bit more with animal care and rabies vaccinations, for example. We also, the learning pods were coming online in terms of planning. And I learned from that experience that while we had potentially used the same locations for childcare or summer camps, there was a lot of modification or at least consideration around how you would then redeploy learning pods in those same, potentially same locations. So it causes a lot for the safety and facilities team to be able to retool sites when new services are open. It's not necessarily business as usual. By this time, the EOC staffing is at about 300 folks. So as we get into September here more recently and in stage seven, we recently expanded or reopened an additional seven city services. And you can see those listed there. In particular, we had to pivot pretty quickly in order to do some real strong support for the census. Canvassing kiosks and tabling also required a lot in terms of what are the right practices and code of safe practices to do that? How do we assess that? And then how do we make sure that folks have the right personal protective equipment and are prepared to do that work? And you can see other ones listed there. And so that's what we've accomplished thus far in terms of from shelter in place to where we're at right now. And so just describe for you just a little bit about what it takes and what we've learned. I want to share a little bit about process and people. We've learned a lot and put a lot in place in the last couple of months when it comes to that. If you go to the next slide, there's five major things I would point out in terms of timing. So the departments back prior to March had submitted these COOPS or continuity of operations plans. Again, in May, we asked them to submit another round of those, but this time tooled toward, what are your priorities for expansion and reopening of services? Those were relatively elaborate plans. I took a look at each and every one of them. A lot of work by the departments. Around June 1st, we commissioned the EOC Powered by People team, which was not only focused on this, but also how do we think about the workforce going forward for the next year or so? By mid-June, we went after those submissions from the departments and met with each of the departments to hear from them about what their priorities were in terms of expanding and reopening, as well as some of the challenges that they might be facing and other issues that we might have to deal with. Like, can somebody stay remote or can somebody return to remote if we're able to find laptops? So all kinds of conversations happened with the departments at that point in time, and we learned a lot from talking with them. By the end of June, we had established an initial EOC request and review process for opening or re-expanding services. This was important because of all of the things that Kip mentioned. There may be things that seemed viable to open, but if there wasn't a broader perspective from an EOC executive leadership team, you could end up with services reopening and colliding with others or maybe not enough safety or facilities folks to do both at the same time. And so we did that and started every other week, meeting with the EOC executive leadership team. I would bring them requests from the departments, and we would vet and discuss and deliberate and review, and then come back to the safety and facilities team and ask them to do a formal assessment. We went back in August to refine the process, make sure we had the right tools for the departments. We were clear about the process. I mean, you can imagine, given the size and range of our departments, it's difficult to get the process communicated down through the organization. And everybody was working a lot, so we redid that, and we have a pretty well-oiled machine at the moment in terms of being able to elicit those requests, make sure we're responding in the right way with safety and facilities, and also vetting those appropriately, not only with the EOC leadership, but the city manager leadership. So a little bit more about what it takes in terms of people. This work is a heavy lift, and I want to honor and acknowledge our safety and facilities folks. On the safety side, folks are putting in, and you all are aware of some of the basic practices around face coverings and hand washing and social distancing. But for every single opportunity we have to expand and reopen, we're having to look at individual positions in some instances, and they develop codes of safe practice. On the other hand, we then have the facilities folks who are going out and making sure that the physical workplace can support the behavioral things in terms of what the health and safety folks are putting together. And so it's a partnership, and it's been an amazing partnership. I watched them grow, and I watched them work more strategically over the last few months. Just to acknowledge that team, there's a team of 30-plus folks from safety and facilities, all of whom, most of whom have been in the EOC for a very long period of time and have given, and also given their time, talent, energy, and commitment and significant devotion to making sure that we can create the best and safest workplace possible, both physical as well as behavioral practices. So I want to acknowledge them here. They're a talented group of folks that I would never have thought as an assistant director for HR I would be spending this much time with and have learned so much from. So in terms of building safe spaces, again, I want to offer up a few things. There's 30-plus team members on the safety and facility side. In addition to that, we have tapped 38 department safety liaisons. So we've asked folks in each department to identify somebody as a safety liaison who can be a resource to departments, who can be a conduit and a hub for communication. When we recognize that supervisors weren't aware of a lot of the practices and policies, hats off to Joe Gregory and Sarah Steele, who trained over 500 supervisors in a very short period of time on what was happening because so much had been happening so quickly. Safety protocols, establishing 20-plus safety protocols. I want to make a note here that their basic codes of safe practice and then often have to be modified or remodified based on the very specific ask that's happening. Launched a really cool safety toolkit, again, a resource for departments and safety liaisons and trained them on that. Performed about 30 facility safety assessments, and these are in partnership between safety and facilities. Again, signing off in a very specific way that we're confident we've put the best things in place. In terms of physical improvements, about nine of the 50 community centers have had physical improvements. Those continue to evolve and move on a daily basis. 12 of 23 library express at pickup locations have had physical improvements to them. 18 of the 18 floors in City Hall have had improvements done. About 95% of the ones that need to be completed are completed. Two of the yards have had physical improvements, and then we've had four other facilities, Airport Regional Waste Water Facility, the Police Administration and Communications Building. So they've been hard at work and a lot more to go and constantly trying to respond in the moment at the same time trying to get ahead. We've been focused on how to prioritize, how to get ahead of the game in terms of preparing to have spaces ready. So in terms of facilities, common area safety improvement. So there's two aspects to this, at least from a facilities perspective. One is the common and shared areas, and while some of those vary a bit, in particular, most of us are familiar with City Hall. Each floor is slightly different. It gets a little bit more interesting as you move out into community spaces in terms of how you do common area improvements, but it's a wide range of things. Touchless fixtures, if you've been in, you've noticed many of those. Bagging the drinking fountains, making signage and floor markings in break rooms, elevators and signage, the lobby spaces, stairwells and floor markings, office ways. I always actually have floor markings in them now, and then entryways, we're doing health screening and signage. So a lot of work just to get from a physical perspective, a common area safe. The second one is when we do return or reopen a service that involves bringing employees back into a space, there's a very specific assessment that occurs, and so it's not if any floor of the 18th floors or of the 18 floors in City Hall are pretty different. So when an employee or a group of employees are about to return to a space or need to, and we did a good example as of the second floor, a very particular assessment has to come in, and so you're looking at furniture. You're looking at equipment like PPE distribution, how much of it is needed. Floor markings, again, very specific and tailored to that office space. Wireless doorbells, workstations, partitioning, particularly plexiglass partitions, and where do you put those? How many of you put them? Do you do them tall? Do you do them short? And then exterior signage, pretty common for any sort of working space for employees. So I wanted to call this wash, rinse, and repeat because I think one of the biggest learnings for all of us, as we particularly have moved into doing more, bringing more back online or retooling spaces for an additional or an alternative service. I think a good example is the childcare and summer camps to learning pods is that it's not a static process. It's not a one-and-done activity. It's something where when something changes, safety and facilities has to go back out and make sure and ensure that that space, it doesn't need to be altered in another way. Do we need to have a different code of safe practice given what people are doing functionally? So I think that's the biggest learning for me, but also we talk about it a lot as a team is how do we make sure that we're, however things are changing, that we're keeping up with them. So in terms of stage seven and beyond, there are a few things, very particular things we're looking at and working on at the moment. And then I think the big thing is the process that we've put in place. And so City Hall, in terms of the first floor, we've initiated a first-floor review and assessment for public access. We're well aware that there's a large segment of our potential population who cannot do things related to first-floor services and that we have to be prepared to potentially bring the public back in. And it's a complicated one, but they're working on it as we speak. We've been working with PRNS in terms of Happy Hollow Park and Zoo. As Kip mentioned, up to 24 learning pods, and that will require a fair amount of expansion if we have that demand to do that. There's a series of Wi-Fi access events going on in terms of digital inclusion. And one that's interesting for us in HR is that throughout the hiring process, there are certain activities where it's actually merited, and we need to bring folks in to a city hall space in order to accomplish the hiring process. So that's an ongoing activity. We see more activity of late. I think the big thing for going forward is, again, the process that I mentioned. On a two-week cadence, we're using an executive team to review the process for expanding or reopening services. We accommodate things in between for sure, but making sure that we have a sound process in place and that we can feel really confident that we've got the right safety practices and facility modifications in place as well. So with that, Kip, I don't know if you want to add anything in conclusion, but that's what I've got.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, team. I think in conclusion, I just first want to extend enormous thanks to Kelly and all of the staff who've been working tirelessly to help us resume services, in many cases pulling double duty with other work either in the EOC or their normal roles. I think at this point, you know, one of the primary bottlenecks on what we can do now that we've figured out how to do things safely is the people to do them. And so I throw up this slide with the parts, an extended roadmap of what we're doing in the Emergency Operations Center. Kelly kind of took you through the build of the different services that we've added in the Emergency Operations Center from really January to today. Here you see a visual of those, the ones that are outlined in yellowish-orange, which is most of them are new services for the city that we had not been doing before. And so all of these services have a team behind them. All of these services are powered by people. And I think at this point, our biggest constraint in continuing to open up services... And I think at this point, our, our biggest constraint in, in continuing to open up services is really making sure that we have the people that we need to do the emergency response and recovery work, as well as provide those services. But I believe that Kelly and her crew, the safety team and the facilities team in particular, have really come up with a methodology that makes sure that our workers are safe and that the employee, the public is safe when they're interacting with our workers. And I'm very proud of that work and we will continue to push to reopen more and more services, realizing that we have this inherent tension between continuing our emergency response and the reopening. So with that, I think we're moving to our next item, which is an update on state and federal action on evictions. And we'll hear from, first from Benah Chang, our Director of Intergovernmental Relations, and then from Jackie Morales Ferrand, our Director of Housing. Benah, I believe it's you.
Great. Thank you so much, Kip. So Benah, I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Relations for the City of San Jose. And here, just to give a quick update on both state and federal actions around evictions. So on the state side, on August thirty-first, the governor signed A B thirty-eighty-eight. As an urgency bill, A B thirty-eighty-eight took effect immediately. The bill was the result of a lot of negotiations between landlords, banks and tenants, and it primarily allows additional time for renters to pay rent if they're negatively impacted by COVID. It's important to also note that the state did not end up taking action on commercial evictions. As a city, we've continued to express to the governor and to GoBiz the importance of commercial protections and the impact of the commercial eviction moratorium on the City of San Jose. On the federal side, on August eighth, the president issued an executive order that directed the Centers for Disease Control, the C D C, to look at preventing presidential evictions. And subsequently, the C D C took action through an order that halts evictions for people who can demonstrate that they have lost substantial income and are making best efforts to pay. Nationally, many advocacy organizations are calling for financial rental assistance to go along with the C D C's actions. Unfortunately, Congress is at a standstill in terms of negotiations on a fourth stimulus package right now. There's been a lot of back and forth and different proposals from different caucuses and from the Republicans and the Democrats. But however, negotiations have really stalled and we don't anticipate that any action will be taking place before the election. So with that, I wanted to pass it on to Jackie to talk about a little bit more detail of these two actions.
Thank you. On August thirty-first, the governor signed the Tenant Relief Act. The act provides eviction protections for rent owed between March first and January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. This protection applies to those who cannot pay rent due to COVID-nineteen. The law applies to all residential tenants, including tenants living in single-family homes, duplexes, apartments and mobile home tenants as well. And as Benah already mentioned, commercial tenants are not covered by this legislation. Under the law, eviction proceedings can begin on October fifth for non-COVID-nineteen protected tenants. City of San Jose residents are subject to San Jose's period-to-pay, March through August rent. Under San Jose's ordinance, tenants must pay fifty percent of their rent within six months of September first by February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. And tenants have until August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one to pay the entire March through August, twenty-twenty rent balance. The Tenant Relief Act prohibits any further local legislation affecting rent between March first through January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. For this reason, the housing department will not be returning next week with additional actions for your consideration because of this prohibition. On September second, the C D C issued its own order placing a moratorium on evictions through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, in an effort to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. The C D C order states that it does not apply in any state with a moratorium on residential evictions that provides the same or greater level of public health protection than the requirements listed in this order. When comparing the federal order with the state's, the state appears to provide a greater level of protection because it would not require a hundred percent of the rent to become due by January first. Next slide. The Tenant Relief Act protects tenants from evictions for unpaid COVID-nineteen rent debt if tenants meet certain conditions. COVID-nineteen rent debt is unpaid rent or any other unpaid financial obligation of a tenant under the tenancy that came due during the time period of protection. The time period covered by the act is between March twenty-twenty through January twenty-twenty-one. For rent owed between March through August, twenty-twenty, tenants cannot be evicted if they provided their landlord with a declaration of COVID-nineteen-related financial distress within fifteen days of receiving a notice of failure to pay rent. So this declaration is extremely important in protecting the tenants. For rent owed between September twenty-twenty through January twenty-twenty-one, tenants cannot be evicted if they provide their landlord with a declaration and pay twenty-five percent of their rent owed between this time, no later than January thirty-first, twenty-twenty. When a landlord serves a notice for non-payment of rent, they have to provide tenants with fifteen days to return the declaration. The landlord must provide an unsigned, unsigned copy of this declaration to the tenant when they serve the non-payment of rent notice. The fifteen-day time limit for the tenant to sign and return the declaration of COVID-nineteen-related financial distress starts the day after the notice is personally delivered to tenants and ends fifteen business days later, excluding weekends and holidays. So as you can see, there is quite a procedure that has to be followed. And the housing department, the state, we just got a great tool from United Way are trying to push out consistent information about what tenants need to do in order to protect their rights.
Thank you, Jackie. Now we're going to go in for a deep dive into our strategic communications plan, which focuses on those most at risk, our most vulnerable communities and non-English speakers. And for that, we're going to bring forward our twin emergency public information officers, Carolina Camarena and Colin Haney, to walk us through their work and the work of their team. Carolina, Colin.
Thank you. Thank you, Kip. Carolina Camarena, I am the co-lead alongside with my colleague Colin Hayne. And my day job is the Public Information Manager for the Department of Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Services. And before I dive into presenting the E O C Communication Strategic Plan for our most vulnerable communities, I want to just do a little bit of a recap of what the E P I O has done thus far. A lot of the information is on the slide, but I'm going to highlight three of the tactics. We have produced close to forty social media influencer videos. It's important that our communities can resonate with the information that we are placing. And so here you will see a member of Los Tigres del Norte. Los Tigres del Norte are a local band, they're multi-Grammy Award winners. And for our Spanish-speaking community, they're like the Rolling Stones, big deal in our own city. So in addition to Los Tigres del Norte, we had other culturally appropriate social media influencers, again, for a total of just under forty, and we did that in five different languages. You're all aware with the flash reports, we've sent out about a hundred and forty of them. And while the majority of them are COVID-related, I think it's important to note that we've had other emergencies during this pandemic, including the rolling blackouts and most recently, the wildfires. And then lastly, I want to just spend a little bit of time with the behavioral messaging. So previously, that was an omni-channel approach meant to reach the masses. And the messages that were chosen were informed by data and they were researched on their effectiveness on memory retention. Next slide, Kip. So now that we've talked about the past, I want to talk a little bit about the present and the future. We have developed a very robust strategic communications plan focused on reaching our most at-risk communities and non-English speakers. The plan aligns with the goals and priorities of the E O C roadmap through the epidemic. It outlines strategies focused again on the hardest-to-reach communities, along with the general population. Santa Clara County Public Health Data was used to inform the strategies. In addition to our city's annual report and a new American Economy Report produced alongside our Office of Immigrant Affairs, which really highlighted the need for language access. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the approach of the plan. And yes, I will be repeating a bit of what I've already said, but it's important to repeat that we are prioritizing the most vulnerable to COVID-nineteen and its effects. Residents and businesses who are less connected to our city of San Jose communication channels and services, our low-income residents and our non-English speakers, our monolingual, non-English speakers. By prioritizing these communities, we are delivering vital information and resources to those who need it the most and community members who are already aware of our city communication channels and empowered to access our resources will still easily find and benefit from our communication efforts. The plan is a living document and it will evolve to meet the needs of our community. A few weeks ago, we received data that again highlighted the need to reach residents who live in apartments, multifamily dwellings or shared spaces. And we are keeping a I Unsubcode nine-five-one-one-seven. Okay, so this would be slide three. What is it that we want to communicate? Well, to our residents, there are four main messages. And in a nutshell, it's get tested, so free testing is available. Supported isolation services are available. We want to make sure that they know what resources are available through our virtual local assistance center and we'll continue to talk about staying safe, wearing your mask, washing your hands and maintaining social distance. For our business, for our business community, we want three main messages. Resources that are available to them through the virtual local assistance and other resources. We want them to understand that testing is the path to reopening and we want them to encourage their employees to get tested. And lastly, we'll continue to promote new state and county health orders as they impact our business community. Next slide, please, Kip. Okay, so community-based social marketing strategies are the foundation of this plan. They proven very, very effective in changing behavior or helping people adopt new behavior. You see the word prompts appear, and prompts is just a really fancy marketing term for reminders. So you're at the grocery store and you've got food on your mind already. You've got your shopping cart and you're going to see an ad that is going to remind you to take a test. It's free, but we'll also let you know that we have food resources available through our Food and Distribution Sessies Branch, as well as our community partners. You'll see other things like tent cards in your dining al fresco. You're at a table, there will be a tent card that will tell you where your mask and again, get tested. Another strategy is what they call social norms. We as humans are likely to do what our role models do. And we've already been employing the tactic of social media influencers. We're going to do some advertisements. We want to advertise in all our ethnic media, that's print, radio and TV. We also want to advertise on YouTube and Facebook and a few other social media channels. Then of course, we're going to continue to amplify all this information on our digital media platforms, the city website, the social media, and that's where the masses will get the information as well. We are in and moving to the recovery phase. We are working with our Community and Economic Recovery Branch and working with our community-based and nonprofit partners to ensure that they have the resources they need to help amplify these messages to our residents. And the same for our neighborhood business districts and ethnic chambers. We want to work with them as well, so that they are empowered and have the information they have to provide the information to small businesses. And then lastly, we want to partner with you all. We need your help. We would like you to help us identify critical business areas and we'd like you to help us promote these messages to your residents and your businesses. So a little bit of homework for you all, you will be hearing from the E P I O branch. And with that, I conclude the presentation, Kip.
Thank you, Carolina and Colin and your team for all the great work you've done, especially stepping in so quickly and building out this, this great plan. I want to close this section, our three-point-one, by highlighting one of our, two of our amazing partners in this case. Emergency management is, is a team sport and we don't do this alone. And we do this with partners. And in this case, the partners that I want to highlight are those who've been really related to our, the actions around evictions that you heard Jackie and Benah talk about. Want to highlight both the Law Foundation and the County Office of Supporting, Supportive Housing. They've set up innovative new approaches to helping tenants and landlords work through potential eviction issues. And as a result, we recognize them here. The Law Foundation has developed a collaborative court, which is this pre-trial forum that resolves issues prior to going to a superior court. They've conducted outreach to educate the community on the various, as you can see, complicated eviction moratoriums at the city, county, state and federal level. And they offer free legal information and counseling to the entire rental community. The County of Santa Clara, specifically the County Office of Supportive Housing, has been an excellent partner. They've implemented a housing mediation program. They offer no-cost mediation for tenants and property owners seeking to resolve disputes without going to court. And they have a critical focus on reducing evictions and deploying, by deploying a viable repayment plan to help people figure out how they can get that cash flow back in, which is also so critical for those small landlords in particular. And they have this common goal of helping each party maintain a healthy rental agreement in the middle of this horrible pandemic. So we close by recognizing these two partners who are doing a great work in terms of supporting the eviction moratorium and allowing people to continue to have a place to live. And with that, City Manager Dave Sykes, I turn it back over to you in conclusion.
Yeah, thank you, Kip, and thank you, team. And Mayor, that concludes our presentation for three-point-one.
Great, thank you, and thank you to everyone who presented, Kelly Parmley, Bennett, Jackie, Carolina Camarena, and of course, Kip and the entire team. Appreciate extraordinary breadth and depth of work that's going on. We only are getting a taste of it here, but we know there's a lot of, a lot moving beneath the surface. We have two members of the public would like to speak, Tessa Woodman-Zee.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to speak on the General Manager's Report. I called the General Manager today because I wanted to speak to him about the urgency of what Prince Charles of Wales has told the public, that he has told us that we have ten years, not even ten years, nine years to reduce our fossil fuel to net zero by twenty-thirty. That is the news of today. That is the news that we must really focus on. And so the thing that my scientist husband said about Greta Thunberg.
Right beyond the city, may I just report?
Okay, I'm, okay, I know, you keep, you keep interrupting me, I know. And that is what our, that Prince Charles said. It's the people in power that are denying this. We have to keep this as the most important thing, is what I'm saying, Sam Lucardo. City Council must use, must be prioritizing climate crisis. We are in a crisis. And then when you're in a crisis, you talk nothing else about anything but the crisis. And the crisis that is bigger, bigger than COVID-nineteen. Read the report from, from Prince Charles about the Marshall Plan that we must implement to save nature. We must save nature. That's where we're at. And you know, and saving ourselves, saving ourselves, because seventy percent of nature has gone away because of our actions and how we live our lives. And we have got to change. And every department, like you are doing with the COVID-nineteen, like my husband, the scientist says, COVID-nineteen is a dress rehearsal for the real challenge, the real crisis that is happening. And it's going to take a lot of talking and you're not doing a good job. That's why I'm talking about General Manager. I called his office, nobody answered. And then he had his secretary, I could hardly hear her voice. He didn't say he was the city manager's office. He did such a bad job. That's what I'm saying. And, and.
Thank you. Blair Pigman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the report today. It was nice to have a COVID report again. It was also nice to not have it last week. Yeah, Kip's words, Kip Harkness's words about local community energy. What you'll be doing, it was interesting to me and naturally I referred to East Bay local community energy, E B C E, and what they've been doing. You know, with the many other practices, you know, in say transit, transit and housing issues, I think the East Bay has been doing some real incredible work in this time of COVID. You know, they've done a really relaxed job. I don't know if that's quite the right word, but you know, they've, they've been, they've, they've planned for the next year and they see, I think, a really clear plan, what can be the next year or two. And they have just. error or two. And they have just acted really decently about it and, and just made everybody feel safe and comfortable and so they don't have to feel stressed about things. And so, good luck in how, you know, I just mentioned, uh, there was a V T A meeting last week, uh, which also is of interest. You know, ideas from the East Bay tend to be more democratic and labor oriented. And so it's interesting that they are practicing these, these progressive good ideas that are not just in a Republican realm of thinking. They can be Democratic Party ideas that here in San Jose, I hope we can really figure out a good uh, choices and, and base, create good choices. With my final twenty seconds, um, you know, this is U N week. And this is time to really consider that we can really put our place and, and make our voice heard at the U N and really work towards positive sustainability ideas right now. I hope we can make those efforts and speak to that to people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, coming back to uh, Councilmember Chemis.
Councilmember Chemis, you're still on mute. Okay, we may have.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, I was having trouble with my uh, my button. I apologize. But I, I'm, I'm, um, you know, Kip, I, I, I don't know who's gonna answer this, but before COVID, we had a robust program in, in our, in our pi- pilot program of uh, parking permits and, 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 uh, well, we have a low-income area, Hoffman via Monte, and uh, you know, after, nothing's been enforced for quite some time. These people are um, so a lot of the blight has, has returned. A lot of the cars that are stolen are coming uh, to the area and I, and we've had a increase in crime. Actually, it was, it was great to have it because we had it, a decrease in crime when this, when this program was implemented. Uh, when do you think we can get back to implementing the parking permit programs, especially in our low, low-income areas?
Uh, Councilmember, thank you for the question. There are a number of folks on the call who know far more about the program and the timing than I do. So I'm gonna turn to uh, Rick Scott, um, or if um, uh, John Ristau would like to field it, that would be great.
Kip, maybe I can help out with that. Heather, Heather Hoshi is also online, so we'll see if we can answer the question. Thank you, uh, Councilmember John Rissa, Department of Transportation. Yeah, we since seventeen, when COVID was first uh, here at the city, we did of our parking compliance activities. Since then, we've started to phase some of those back in. I think you're referring to both perhaps the vehicle abatement and then also compliance for citations or, or within the residential permit parking area. Is that what you're asking about?
That's exactly what I'm asking about. Yeah.
Yes, uh, we have been started to phase back in vehicle abatement activities, but we have not started to do any compliance activities on the residential permit parking. Uh, Heather can get into a little bit more of the details, but it's just really fundamentally comes down to a matter of we just don't have the staff right now to be able to do all of that. Uh, some of the compliance officers have been as reassigned to other COVID-related activities and we're just short staffed right now. So as we start looking at how to return some of the those staff to normal duties, we'll be, we'll be starting to do that stuff, but Heather might be able to give you more details on that.
Sure. Thank you, John. Heather Hoshi, uh, Division Manager with Department of Transportation over Parking and Downtown Operations. Um, thank you for the question. Uh, we have re-engaged vehicle abatement. Uh, I'm in a limited service level and what we're doing is officers are proactively patrolling every city street throughout the city. And um, what that's allowing us to do is we're getting through uh, the entire city uh, every seven, potentially every seven to ten days. Um, this is allowing our resources to really um, be more equitably distributed across the city. Um, we are not responding to individual service requests for vehicle abatement received through three one one. The San Jose uh, three one one app or web portal at this time. Uh, we are looking for vehicles that are um, either inoperable per the California Vehicle Code definition or that are contributing to safety concerns or extreme blight. Um, we're removing about, we've removed about three hundred and fifty vehicles uh, since uh, engaging in vehicle abatement services um, back in June. And um, we're, we're really working on a limited resource uh, platform with about fifty to sixty percent of our regular scheduled staff, um, parking compliance officers. So um, we're doing the best we can to get kind of the real worst of the worst off the streets, um, if you will, with the limited resources we have. With regard to citation issuance, um, we're also doing proactive patrols in the same manner. Proactive, different team, proactively looking for safety-related violations, things like blocking sidewalks, parking, obstructing bicycle lanes, no parking zones, things like that, that are really kind of impacting safety. Those are our priorities right now and we're issuing cite, uh, citations for that. We are also since the re-engagement of paid parking at meters in the downtown core. We're also back in the core issuing citations for um, meter-related violations and safety-related violations in the downtown.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, John.
Heather, uh, Heather, uh, if, if you can stay with me here, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. So you're the second person I've told that we don't, they're not responding to three one one uh, requests. So I mean, I, we, we use three one one to like make your job easier. So you don't have to go around the entire town um, picking up, you know, looking for cars. You, you, you actually get a hint of where they are. Uh, abandoned or what have you. Why aren't we using the three one one? And, and I've heard it with the, you know, this, that, that uh, you're not taking three one one for, for fixing lights either. We've actually had to send in um, light requests via my office. If, if we're, if we're not using three one one, why are we telling people to use it?
So the, in our regular scheduled programming, your kind of our traditional vehicle abatement program, we received over about, uh, over sixty thousand service requests annually. Um, that for us to keep up with that service delivery, it took a team of um, eight to ten contract staff, um, which we currently do not have um, working at this time. In addition, it took um, somewhere between uh, five to seven, depending uh, officers in the P C U to follow up on those service requests. So a very significant resource lift for the vehicle abatement program. Um, there's a lot of field activity required for every service request that comes in. And unfortunately, if we are responding only to those service requests, um, the squeaky wheel is going to get the grease. So we're not getting to all areas in the city equally when we're only responding to those service requests. Um, in addition, those sixty thousand service requests only result in about seven percent of vehicles being towed or removed from the street. Most of those service requests are related to vehicles that are parked for extended periods of time, not abandoned vehicles, not extreme blight, just a lot of long-term parking stays. So the resource use and the kind of R O I we get on um, investigating those service requests isn't great. What we are experiencing with the proactive vehicle abatement is that we're, we are towing about forty percent of those vehicles that we identify through proactive patrols with the P T C O uh, office. So it's a much better uh, model. We're, we're seeing a lot better results with this model as opposed to um, the three one one model. We are reviewing, um, recently, this last month, we've started reviewing service requests to see if there are any that potentially meet the current criteria that we're um, looking uh, to find on the street to remove. And if we do find that there's a service request that we believe meets the criteria, we are notified, or we are asking officers when they're on patrol in that area to keep an eye out for that vehicle. So we are now using those service requests. We're just not responding to every single one because we don't have the staff.
The yes and that I would add to that, uh, we are reconvening the executive team that guides the, the work around three one one and the service delivery. And we're gonna be looking at how do we retool both the service delivery to meet the needs of the time that we're in and the way that we're using and messaging around three one one. So yeah, Heather gave very good stats and a lot of this was uncovered in depth in the, actually the audit that went forward a while back. Is that while there are some services that are very well fit with three one one, for example, the streetlight reporting gives us a very good job of whether the streetlights out or not. Abandoned vehicle was one where we had a lot of, if you will, false positives. Where uh, over eighty percent of the reports were not actually abandoned vehicles. They were just vehicles that were parked for an extended period of time or may not have been as nice a car as somebody might want in their neighborhood. And so we found that the proactive uh, approach that Heather and her team are taking, um, provides both a more effective um, use of the limited resources and more equitable use of the limited resources. But we'll be working as an executive team to come, and we have to come back at a future date to talk about how do we retool both the service delivery side of the various three one one services and the communication messaging to make sure that we're not sending people uh, unnecessarily to a dead end, or we're not using a tool in a way that's not effective.
Well, uh, forgive me, but I mean, I, I don't know. If you drive by the car, if you don't really know if it missing an engine just because it looks nice or something, or are you checking for license plates? And why aren't we using the con, you just said that you're not using contractors anymore. What, why, why, why not?
A couple of reasons. We're looking for some potential cost savings. That's a significant um, cost for uh, the city to run the contract staff. In addition, in our COVID environment, it's very difficult to run that additional team. It was based out of City Hall. Um, and that's a large amount of staff to bring back and the supervisory staff currently is um, a remote working. And we haven't um, established a way to make that work remotely. Um, it's field work and they need to check in and have onsite oversight that we have not um, re-engaged at City Hall yet.
Well, when do you expect to be back up, uh, to full staffing and when is your, when, when, when are, when is your staff coming back? Um, and to, to, to help us with these, with the complaints?
I'll, I'll take that. We are currently doing the Emergency Operations Center Staffing Plan and we've broken it up into Tours of Duty. The next tour of duty is between now and the first of January twenty twenty one. And so we are doing operation currently to, to assess staffing needs and staffing levels. We'll be meeting over the weekend as an executive team to go line by line, item by item, uh, which individuals could return back to the department and which are, continue to be needed in the E O C perform the eleven new services that we're performing. After that, Heather and her team will have a better sense of who they have and who they don't have and can plan accordingly on what, what they can return to. Um, I, I, we have really made very good use of the Department of Transportation. I think they, Parks and Recs and probably Library and Third are the ones we have some of the highest level of reassignments to an amazing array of various duties from everything from moving frozen peas to directing traffic and testing sites uh, to you name it. Uh, we've, we've been uh, tapping into, to, to John and Heather's team. So once we've made a decision around what the E O C staffing is needed for the rest of the year, Heather and her team will have a better sense of what they can do and then they will submit their requests for resumption of service through, through our process. At the moment, the main blocker on, on her being able to do more is a combination of the uh, needs of the E O C and the, the budget reduction targets that we've had to meet as a city.
Okay, Kip, I, I, I know that that's three one one system was your baby and I could, I could tell you that we've, we've um, our staffs are now becoming the three one one because I get calls all the time on, on abandoned cars because nobody's enforcing it, quote unquote. Um, I get, I don't understand how many calls I get on lights being out and how long it's been taking them and how many times they've reported it and they had to elevate it to me. And so, um, you know, if we're, we're spending millions of dollars on that three one one system. I know we are. Uh, so what do we, if, if it's not gonna work, why spend the money on it? And we just let my staff handle all the calls as, as we used to do before we had the uh, the app.
Well, I think, uh, I think your challenge is a good one, sir. And uh, that's part of the reason that I'm, I've asked the executive team to recon, reconvene and go i- in-depth around where we are and, and aren't with each service and what we can and can't do within the light of COVID. I think the first thing that we've learned about three one one is it's important to be clear in our communications on what we can and can't do. We found it is a great resource in terms of centralizing our information, but as Heather's pointed out, that the the complaint-driven is only one piece of the service delivery. So the challenge I'll take, and it looks like Jim may add in a little bit, is that we are gonna be working with that group to, to figure out what our three one one strategy is in the era of COVID. And we'll be happy to bring that back to you for discussion, debate and direction as we move forward. Jim, you'd like to add?
Kip, it, it's about a little bit of a different issue. It's about the vehicle abatement staff and the contractual staff. Councilor, we've been funding that through the general purpose parking fund, not the general fund of the city. And you may recall, that fund is not in good shape. When, when we went into the COVID emergency, we stopped charging at the meters, we stopped collecting a lot of revenue at the garages. So the parking fund's ability to pay for the contractual vehicle, vehicle abatement staff was just not there. So one other aspect of the decision to go to the service model that Heather described was to get necessary savings in the city's parking fund. It's a fund that is not in good shape. And that's typically a general fund service, but we were doing it through the parking fund and it really didn't have the ability to continue doing that. I think Heather's presented a way to get more vehicles towed that are inoperable or in bad shape than the other method of chasing around cars that are just parked for long periods of time. So I, I appreciate your frustration, but there are a variety of reasons why we're where we're at. I think Kip's described a process that we're going to look at all this and figure out if we can find additional and better ways to provide more service.
Okay, I'm, I'll look forward to what's happening with the three one one report when it comes back. Because I, I had a lot of hopes for that app and I, and I, and I was giving you guys a lot of accolades, but if somebody files a complaint and they can't get service, it's, it's useless. I, I actually uh, also wanted to see what's going on with the P G and E outfitting the forty four thousand for forty four thousand LED lights because it seems like I'm getting a lot more complaints on um, on LED lights and that's, you know, some of it is a safety-related issue and I, I wanna, I wanna know is, is P G and E too busy because of the fires or this, that was one of my concerns when we first gave him that contract?
Yeah, John Riss again, uh, Director of Transportation, uh, Councilmember Mont, sure, Matt is on, but I can take a crack at answering that. We are, as you remember, what we were, the approach was going to be doing on-bill financing agreement with P G and E. And that con, that contracted agreement with P G has been executed. They actually have their contractors in the field right now doing assessments of all of the lights throughout this. These are the streetlights we're talking about to the city to determine what type of fixtures they're gonna be needing to replace. So that is ongoing right now. They'll be moving from assessment phase into actually changing out the lights over this next year and it should be done by next summer, I think. I remember the schedule right. So that underway, we actually are tracking it on a website so that uh, put that up sometime in the future and let the council and public know that we've got a tracking website on that as well. So it is underway. They're running a contract and they're moving forward.
John, can you comment on the streetlights too? Uh, the San Jose three one one system, is that still the way you're taking in service requests for streetlight repair?
Y- y- yes, it is. And maybe Rick could jump in on that one too, but, but yeah. I- in, in addition to what P G and E's doing, what part of the measure key budget did was provide uh, a number of lights for the D O T staff to, as a, as a sodium light would go out, Rick's teams are actually then out there replacing them with LED lights while we're still waiting for P G and E to get fully up and going. So we're doing replacements right now on any light that goes out, his team is going out there and doing the replacements and that's adding up to thousands. So we're doing quite a few as that's happening to. Rick, any, anything else you wanna add to that?
Um, nothing to add. Just we're still taking complaints and concerns via three one one for streetlights. So that's the first I've heard of that. So if there's an issue, uh, council member with reports going to your staff, please reach out to our D O T team and we can follow up on those.
Yeah, yeah, we, we will and um, we have. I, I don't know why, why I'm in fact, a very prominent member of my community who's the head of an association and I'm not gonna name which association have, has had their streetlight out for a while, reported it online, still not fixed, just sent me an email last week. Uh, in any case, um, yeah, well, we'll, we'll get my staff to talk to you further. Thank you. Thank you. That's the end of my questions. Thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. Uh, a lot of good questions from Councilmember Canvas, which I will follow on in a minute. But first, uh, Kip, I, I wanted to thank you for the report, but I also wanted to thank you for so. quickly responding and opening up facility, facilities when the air quality was so poor. I called you on Friday and it happened the next day, so I truly appreciate your responsiveness to that. Thank you very much for helping some of our residents get away from that horrible toxic air that we had. And I know that's not the only thing you had on your plate, so I, I appreciate you taking care of that. Kelly, I had a question for you regarding our staffing. Is she still here? Yes. Regarding the health and wellness, what are we doing to reach out to our staff or to make sure that our staff is aware of their ability to seek counseling, to talk to someone about isolation, depression, anxiety, we all, we're all going through emotional or, or issues right now that we didn't have on pre-COVID and now that we're at home all the time, there is a higher level of depression, anxiety, stress. Parents who are teaching their kids at home, distance learning, all these things, but and then we have employees who are also being parents at home, doing their job and having the same mental stressors that some of us have that don't have kids around. So what are we doing to making sure that we're making it easy for our staffs to access the health and wellness programs we, we have available?
So I think a couple of things and I think Jennifer Shembry may be on here if I, if I miss something, she may be a little more familiar with some of the services, but number one, I just want to say that unlike prior years in our health and wellness division, we actually have gone out to our vendors and are lining up an entire schedule of at least online webinars, some of which will be recorded around health and wellness. It's not been our typical approach to making resources like online webinar resources available to folks and we're scheduling those out from October through December and then we'll start the spring after that. And posting those on a website, that's not how we've done those before, so there are more of those resources available and we're working on and including those in regular citywide communications. I think that's one thing that we're doing differently. Secondly, we have an E A P resource where we, we periodically are reaching out. The departments are probably the folks who have the greatest contact with their employees. So making sure that our H R liaisons and we meet with them just about monthly or every other month to reinforce that here are the resources that we make available to you in terms of you being able to contact somebody from an, an E A P resource, Employee Assistance Program. The third thing is, and this isn't a direct answer to your question, but we've put out an employee experience survey just last week. And one of the questions that we are asking on there are things like, do you have access to the resources you need when it comes to mental, emotional health? You know, what's your current state in terms of, do you feel isolated? You know, so some of it needs to be, are we gauging our workforce in terms of where they're at and how pervasive are some of these resources? So are pervasive some of these challenges, which you know are pretty pervasive, right? And so we hope to use the survey results, which we should have in October in order to ramp up additional resources and make those valuable. So Jennifer, I don't know if you have anything additional to add, but I will say since I've been here for the last three and a half years, we've really ramped up in the last three months to be able to put more resources out there for folks to be able to access. And so we're really just getting on the front of the communication right now about that. And I don't have anything to add. I think you covered it. Well, Kelly, thank you.
I think it's really important that one of your slides emphasized health and wellness for our employees and that we make sure that they are valuable and important people and that we're here to help and offer them the resources they, they need to stay healthy and well mentally and physically. So anything we can do to help with that, I know it's, it's a struggle with our own little district staffs to maintain that connectivity too, because we're just connecting via via Zoom meetings and that's not the same kind of connection. But I do worry about our staffs. I worry about those who might be in domestic violent situations and stuck at home and then they have children and just all the additional stressors that are put on our lives in, in a, in a COVID world and all the other things that are happening right now. So thank you for including that. That's really important.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Moving on, just, I just wanted to say something about A B thirty eighty eight, just to, just to emphasize something Jackie mentioned about A B thirty eighty eight that was signed by the governor and that is that two things need to occur when the notice of eviction is served or the notice to pay is served by the landlord. First, the notice is to be delivered in the language, the dominant language of the tenant. So a landlord cannot depend on if they're, if the landlord is English speaking and the tenant is Spanish speaking, they can't depend on just giving the notice in English. They must give it in the dominant language as well. That's to avoid any communication issues that could be a, a, a serious problem. The other thing to note is that it is, and Jackie mentioned this, but I just wanted to emphasize it, that it's fifteen business days. Normally the clock starts and it's fifteen calendar days, but fifteen business days is a lot longer. It's effectively three weeks instead of two weeks. So I just wanted to emphasize that. I've actually been in a lot of classes from landlord tenant side to figure out what we're supposed to do and really nothing, i- i- it's documentation and a little bit more time from the tenant's perspective and a little bit more protection, protections too, which is, which is really good. I wasn't going to ask these questions, but because Councilmember Camus did, it sort of set my, my, my thoughts in a direction and just to emphasize some of the things that he mentioned is that we as council offices are starting to get lots of calls about vehicle abatements. We've probably had three or four that I know of today on vehicle abatement issues where motor homes are broken down in front of houses or cars that look like they are stolen are being left in front of people's homes. We're getting a lot of those calls and if, if they are not, we've been telling them to call or to go on the app, San Jose three one one. And if they're not to do that, who should they be calling? Because they're calling us. And we have small offices, we can take care of it, but we're going to call you and say, send someone over and take, and tag that car. So what, what's the most efficient way to, to get this taken care of? Because this is a frustration. Our, our residents are home. They're watching the car sitting in front of their house. They don't like the house, car sitting in front of their house. It's been there for a week. No one's ta, no one's removing it. They've called and reported it, but now we're hearing that you're not looking at three one one. So we need to notify our residents because we don't want them to get frustrated. So what, what should we do to help our residents out and, and help you out as well?
I see, I see bunches of, of lights going on, but I want to, I want to say before the, before the people who know what they're talking, talking, doing, talking, talking about, say something. I want to, I want to just frame it up a little bit. I think you've actually put forward a good design challenge, which is, you know, how might we respond to the needs of the community and deal with the COVID piece? And I think that what, what you've got, especially around abandoned vehicles is, is an exacerbation of a problem we've had with abandoned vehicles for a long time, which is over ninety percent of the calls that we get are not actually an abandoned vehicle. And so in an era where we have extremely limited resources, we've made the decision that chasing those limited resources is not the best use of time. However, to your point, people are increasingly concerned about fed up with what are clearly abandoned vehicles or, or, or other situations where people are living out of the street that are impacting their quality of life and for them and their neighbors. And so how do we, how do we respond to that? And, and what communications do you need? Now, I, I think we need to actually do some internal work and work together, both on the service delivery side, the resource side and come back to you with a clear answer on that. If the folks who have lit their lights up here, cameras up, have something more specific to add, I would welcome that. But I think that's a, that's a larger action item that I'll take as a, as a, as a design challenge on us. So I'm going to go, Jim, John, and then Heather. Jim?
Nothing to add, Kip.
Thank you, John.
No, yeah, that, that was fine, Kip, and I just want to reassure the council member and all council members that we're trying to be as responsive as possible. I think Kip laid it out. It's a matter of priority and not having enough staff to cover all of the things we did before. As Kip pointed out, we are going to go back and look at how to do this and what kind of resources we can bring back into, in on, on these issues. So we're going to be on it and we will be responding.
Right. And this is a classic one that if we don't do anything, it falls right on the council offices and you hear from a hundred and fifty people every two minutes. So we, we, you know, that's, that's not a minor thing. And that this is a significant issue for a lot of people in our community. So we'll take that back as a challenge and an action item.
Okay, so just to push back a little bit on it, on you, Kip, when will this come back with more definition on how we should be communicating with our, our residents? Because now we're, we need to go and tell them, don't use three one one because we're not checking that. I mean, we'll figure out a positive way message to say that, but.
I'll do two follow ups before, before Wednesday, the end of Wednesday, we'll get you a short term communications piece on, on what you do. We've already scheduled the executive meeting to go and begin the first piece of work around this. That will take a couple of turns of the dial to, to, so we don't have executive driven innovation. We have, we have the work done by the people who actually understand it. And then we'll do a second round of more detailed communication support to you all, once we've done any modifications. But I'll work with our E P I O Carolina Camarena and Colin, who's actually from D O T, to get you out some immediate communications that you can use to triage and distinguish between those services on three one one, which they should continue to use and those services on three one one, which perhaps aren't the most useful right now. So we'll do that before the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, wonderful. That's, that's really helpful. Now moving on to LED lighting, which I also didn't come here prepared to speak about, but since Councilmember Camus brought it up, I will. I have a couple of neighborhoods who have been very insistent on when the LED lighting is coming their way. If a neighbor is concerned, the light isn't broken out, broken, so it functions, but they're concerned about the amount of light that comes out of the pole, is it possible to get it replaced because there's some concerns in a couple of streets that there's robberies and crime occurring because the lighting isn't very good? Is there anything we can do to prioritize those, that type of situation?
Well, as I, this is John Risto again, and thanks for the question. The, the plan, get them all changed out and that's actually underway right now. As I mentioned earlier, we are replacing anything that burns out. So if there is an issue with a burned out light, that's the, the old sodium lights, we're out, we will be out there to replace the LEDs and we try to do that within a couple of days. I know backed up on a couple of those too, but we are trying to replace everyone that goes out. So we, we're trying to do that on a, a priority basis because we do know that those lights are important for a community's safety and wellbeing.
Okay, I appreciate that, John. I don't want to tell people if their light's out that we'll replace it quicker because I don't want them to go make sure the light is out. Although that might, I mean, they're, they're resourceful, so you never know. But I appreciate that. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the issue that I bring up all the time, which is our seniors. And what are we doing to address isolation with our seniors and more importantly, connecting with our seniors to connect with our students who might be able to connect with each other and remove some of the isolation, but also help our kids who need some mentoring.
The council member, this is, this is something that you've been consistent on and I think it's a particularly appropriate challenge right now. As, as you know, if we look, if we take a data driven approach to who's most vulnerable, clearly our seniors are most vulnerable, a, a risk of being seriously ill and dying from this disease. This is very much a disease that, that affects you more and more as you age. So I've, I've actually asked Angel Rios to take the lead in, in, in developing our strategy over the next three months. Not developing it over the next three months, developing our strategy to implement over the next three months around how we will reaffirm our focus and sharpen our focus on supporting seniors, especially as this, as this continues to drag on. I don't know that Angel's on the call at this point, but I have, I have, have asked him to, to meet with the key folks, come back to me, do a readout. We've got that booked and scheduled and I'd really like the opportunity to bring that to you all. Because I do believe this is one of the most critical, critical groups. The good news is we, you know, in terms of the, some of the care facilities, the county has taken a leadership role there. But between feeding, social isolation, telemedicine, you name it, there's a lot of issues that we're going to need to be very supportive on our senior community on. And so that's something that we've got in the works and we'd like to come back with.
I appreciate that. That's a, working with the seniors is a council priority of my district. So please reach out to us. We'd be happy to help. Thank you very much. That, that concludes my questioning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on the vehicle abatement, what is happening with checking the plates for, that have been reported as against a stolen vehicle database? Is anything happening with that? I did, I did hear Heather saying they're now going through the three one one requests, but I didn't, I didn't hear whether they, they're being looked at to see if they're stolen vehicles.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, while we are in the field and we are following up on a vehicle, it is standard procedure for officers to run the plate to see if it comes back as a stolen vehicle. Protocol requires us that we have to be in the field at the vehicle to run a plate. So we do not run plates just because they come in on three one one. So we do, we do run them in the field, however, and that is currently happening.
So is that happening based on ha, ha, them having been reported through three one one?
It, so an officer, if it comes across a vehicle during their proactive patrols that meets the criteria that we've established, the inoperable per the California Vehicle Code or the other safety and blight kind of triggers we've identified, they will, they will pull over to assess the vehicle and potentially mark and tag it or if it qualifies for immediate tow, tow it and at that time they run the plate. So it's only on vehicles that are identified through that criteria.
So I, I'm going to piggyback off of what Councilmember Camus said, you know, stolen vehicles could have been stolen, taken for a joyride and then dumped and look fine. People are reporting vehicles that they don't see, you know, that are sort of new in their neighborhood and have been around a while. Why not just run the plates on three one one? On three one one reports? Why do you have to be out there?
That's the standard protocol for the Department of Justice. We have to be in the field. It's a evidence chain of evidence issue. So we, parking compliance officers are not sworn. So we do not have the authority. We find it, if we happen to stumble upon a stolen vehicle and, and confirm that it is per the D O J database, we have to turn that over to P D and we leave the scene. So there's lots of kind of protocols that are in place because we're not sworn.
So if it is suspected to be stolen when someone reports it, is that something you can add to your protocol for your, your, you also were saying you're giving, when you're, when you were looking at the, the three one one requests that you've been reporting them out to people who are doing the patrols? So is that something you can add when they're, they're suspected stolen?
We don't have an identifier to indicate, for someone to communicate that the vehicle is stolen. That we wouldn't know how to identify that in the field or have that communicated to us.
Okay, so there's no way to do and I haven't reported a, an abandoned vehicle in a very long time, so I don't remember. Is there no way to write a note?
There is, that, that would be a manual come through of information and having to open and, and review every single request. But further, the constituent reporting, what would they be basing their thought that the vehicle was stolen upon?
So we have, you know, we have a lot of neighbors who are trained in, in neighborhood watch and they, they're out walking their dogs every, every day and, and they, they know their neighbors. I know my neighbors' cars. And if something's there for a week and it hasn't, it hasn't moved anywhere and we don't see any, we haven't seen any new neighbors moved in, that would be, that would be an indicator that the car may have been dumped. There are also, by the way, neighborhoods in my district where stolen cars are often dumped. And so those And so those neighbors are particularly sensitive to new cars being. Left in their neighborhood for, for longer periods of time. So again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. You know, I understand that you have a lot of, a lot of false positives in the, in the 311 requests, but. I, I guess, you know, everybody's been trained since nine 11. If you see something, say something and they're saying something and nothing's happening. And, and I don't, I don't want to lose that. Helpfulness from our residents, just because we have a protocol that doesn't take their, their on the ground knowledge into an account, into account. And I think we can all agree, every neighborhood is, is different and the neighbors know their neighborhood best. So we're. We're completely discounting any of that information just because we're not willing to have an automated search for the word stolen come up. To, to put those requests up in the notes to prioritize looking at those items. I guess I, I don't understand why.
I'll just, I'll just jump in a little bit. Part of it is, part of it is, you know, we, part of what we've adopted before the world changed, as you know, was. Getting the system in place and iteratively improving. So this type of, of question or suggestion is something that we would put in the queue, evaluate. And see if we could, we could individually improve. So it's quite possible that there's a technical solve for that. But we also need to, we need to understand a couple of things. One is, is, you know, what are the legal ramifications of this? What are the operational ramifications for this? And then relative to all of the other pieces of potential improvement, is this the priority improvement that we want to make on this cycle of improvement? So again, I, I, I don't want to discount anything that's being said. I think the message that I'm getting is it would be very useful for us to come back and do a deep dive. Around the 311 and the service delivery. What we're going to need to make that meaningful is the time to go back and work through. Where we are and where we aren't in COVID, so that we can come back to you with a recommendation on what we think our approaches at work and what additional resources we might need. In order to move forward. But your point, your point from a technical standpoint. Searching for the word stolen and, and prioritizing running a plate is completely technically possible. But there are, there are several other questions that we want to, we would need to address and answer before we prioritize that piece of work.
Okay, I understand that. I just, and I appreciate Kip saying that you'll get us a, a communication piece about 311 and vehicle abatements. By the end of the day tomorrow, I just want to point out there are now three of us council members who have said our offices are getting inundated with these. They are very. Upset when they report something and they get a note saying, we're not doing that anymore. We have to be. And I don't think I understand completely. I understand the numbers of people we've moved from parks and DOT and library to, to E O C. But we haven't, I don't have a good sense of. And these things are not able to happen or the backlog is so much from when we had 590 people in E O C. That we're still digging out of it because I will tell you, I'm getting comments like you're hiding behind COVID and not doing this anymore. And, and I, there's, there's a sense of, and I think we can, we can all understand the frustration of, you know, wanting to return to normal. And wanting our services to return to normal and that not happening. As quickly as maybe reopenings are happening, for example. So we really need. I, I appreciate the, having the 311 and vehicle abatements communication that will be helpful, a more comprehensive. A list of sort of backlogs or, or numbers of staff by department that are. Going to do the other, whatever it was, 12 things. I mean, that slide was very telling. Here are all the services that are new since March. People don't have a sense of that. I'm going to show that in my office hours on Saturday. I already, you know, flagged that. That we need to show people, hey, we don't have more staff since March. And we've got these 12 other things that we're doing that we weren't doing before. So a really, I would just appreciate a deeper dive into that. And if it's not a presentation, it doesn't have to be. If it's an info memo, great. But we need to be able to communicate that to our residents that here are all the things. That are happening now and here are all the things that can't happen because of the COVID things that are still happening. Because there are people in our districts who are not getting. The new services and are seeing the deficit of the older services not happening.
And if, if I could, councilmember, I certainly want to just weigh in a bit and certainly we, we're feeling it too. And certainly in my one on ones with each of you, we've been kind of having these discussions. And so, you know, Kip alluded to it. You know, what's planned over the weekend and for us to be able to come back and really have that. You know, I've been using the word, we need to reconcile kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
It's not even reconcile. We, we're actually in for a reckoning here because. We are at the point where we've, we've got just too much going on, but your, your question is the right question. We need to at least be able to articulate. What we're doing and what we're not doing and why aren't we doing that? And, and be able to really articulate that in a way that people can, it can resonate with people. And they can either buy in or, or we can say, no, we need to adjust because that's not the priority. And so, you know, today's presentation was, was meant to be the beginning of that conversation. But it's not the beginning of the work. We're going through that work right now and we owe that to you. We owe it to the, the public, you know. You know, I do want, I think on the 311 app, you know, most of the, the services on there are still being responded to. There is some caveats on there about our ability to respond in, in a certain timeline. It is the vehicle abatement one is, is the one issue on there that I think. We've, we've, we've got a very different model now and we need to do a better job of really describing that model or, or adjusting from that model. So that the, you know, the, the complaints can be managed in a better way. So that's, that's our commitment and that's why we scheduled today's discussion really is to, to get into this and, and. And, and let you know where we're going with it and, and to commit to coming back and having, having that information available to us all so that we can prioritize.
So will we be having that discussion next week, Dave? Did I hear you say that? Or are you saying that's coming in October or?
Yeah, I think, ask Kip to help me. It won't be next week. It, it, it's probably more of an October conversation. I, I will say that next week, I, I think we planned not to have a 3.1 because we. Were trying to balance out the agenda with other items. And so we've got a heavy police agenda next week. So Kip, is there any more light you can shed on kind of when that we can come back with that discussion? I know the work is ongoing right now.
Yeah. And it's, and it's two, it's two, it's well, several different pieces of work. It's, it's both identifying what's needed in the E O C to maintain. It is, it is re-engaging with some of the services and, and modifying them as we go. And then the, and then the more strategic conversation is we've got. Three large buckets of work. One is this COVID and COVID response. The other is all the priorities that we were working on in terms of change and new things before COVID hit. And the third one is all the policy priority work that we've been directed to do as a priority by council. And I think what we owe you is we really need to reconcile. Those three buckets of work and come back to you and tell you where we are and aren't. Able to move forward or not, based on the way we're approaching things and then get, have a chance to get your feedback. If this is the right way to do it or not. So I think, I think it will probably take a couple of different hits at it. We'll have much more clarity on the E O C needs in the next week or so. And so we can have the first, next round of this conversation in, in October.
I would add a fourth bucket to that, Kip, which is not policy related, but service related.
Yeah, I, 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 yes. And I think in my mind, I, I had, I had services underneath those, but I, I, I totally, I totally agree. And I think your point, the one of the things you said, councilmember, that I think really struck me is that, you know. Where you are and your perspective matters a lot on this. So, you know, we have some, we have some community members who are. Receiving five out of 11 of the new services and we have some community members who are receiving zero. Out of 11 of the new services and have been subtracted away, six out of the nine that are, that are, that they used to depend on. And so. Both people have a perspective and, and it can be dramatically different depending, depending on which piece you're at. And so we need to be able to reconcile both those and, and then bring to you some policy decisions on where the, where the emphasis will be on the priorities. In terms of, in terms of those different, those different groups. So we'll, we'll, we have begun the work. I will continue to work with the city manager and city manager's team on that. And we realize now that in addition to the COVID piece, we must go beyond it and think about the broad array of, of services that we deliver. So thank you.
I appreciate that. So I just want to be clear, we're going to get a report on that and a full discussion about that in October. Is that correct?
Yes, we can, we can do that and we'll, we'll, we will, we will come back in October and figure out when, when we can do that in October.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, councilmember, yep?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just following along the thread of discussion with what's, what's been going on, I'll echo the comments about the abatement. Although I understand the pickle we're in and I would differ in my, from my colleagues. In that I wouldn't stop recommending that residents use 311 and I would try to explain to them the situation we're in and. I would encourage them to keep using it because I do believe we want the data. You know, there's some value to that and I don't want them to lose confidence, although they may be already, but I don't want them to lose confidence. And, and send the signal that we're abandoning the project because I think the project is still worthwhile. And as has been stated by Heather and others, it's, it's a manpower issue. It's, it's a contractor issue. And, and once we're back to normal times, whatever that is, once we have the, the resources and the funding. You know, I, I do hope we'll, we'll keep doing the active patrols and as well as responding to them through the app. So, so I wouldn't tell residents to abandon hope on that. I, I do have a question since we're on this topic. I, I know that we're only looking at the safety issues concerns, but I, I got an interesting question this morning. And since Heather's here. So we have a car that's being used, that's being driven regularly. It's not being parked for more than 72 hours. Yet it's leaking oil. And so there's an environmental concern where you're thinking oil then, but I don't feel we can tow it or do anything with that. People need the car. But do we have a code or E S D side where there's an environmental harm that we can find or do something with that?
Yes, unfortunately it's not a parking code, so my team can't, can't address that. There, there may be something, but it would be most likely an E S D reporting situation.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for, for that. On the issue of streetlights, I, I know that PG&E is going around and doing the LED stuff and, and we're still, it seems taking a streetlight request. Broken streetlight request from 311. Do we know an average turnaround time of that? Is it like a one week, two week, three week turnaround?
Mr. Risto? Or Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Rick, you might want to take that one.
You know, it really varies on the type of outage, you know, for example, if a pole is knocked over, that could take a very long time for us to coordinate. The response there, but for a typical outage where a bulb is replaced, our goal is to have that done in seven days. And, and we hit that usually pretty well. As you get into these LED replacements, it typically takes a little bit longer, up to 14 days. And so our goal is typically to get around 60% of those completed within 14 days.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to underline that because I think some of the delay that you're seeing is we're switching from a replacing the low sodium pressure sodium bulb. To replacing the entire light fixture with an LED that won't burn out for a number of years. And so that's a, that's taking us twice as much time as it normally does. And, and once you start doing that electrical work, at least the people who know how to do electrical work tell me, you often encounter things. We have about. You know, eight different types of poles, really 16 different types of poles. If you, if you go in because of all the way we've grown over the years. And so it's, it starts to get complicated when you move from a simple bulb replacement into that kind of work. So I think I'm hopeful. I want to dig into the data, but a lot of that delay is actually related to the fact that we're replacing it with a long-term fix rather than a shorter term fix of the sodium.
Okay. And, and jumping back to the, the tow edge real quick. I know that residential vehicle or personal vehicles being left on the street are not an immediate public safety issue. But what, what are we taking different tact with the commercial vehicles being parked over six feet on public streets and is being left for a while? If there are requests coming in for that, will we tag them?
I'm not necessarily a request coming, yes, if, if we see a request and it's potentially a, maybe an obstruction. Or a line of sight concern or parked at a red curb. So then, then causing again, a line of sight issue, yes. But those become very obvious to, during proactive patrols because the officers are actually driving the street. And that, that, that sticks out kind of like a sore thumb to them. So those are easy grabs for us during proactive patrols. And we actually end up getting those proactive patrols before they end up getting reported through 311.
Okay. So if it's still there, then it's likely not a line of sight issue then. And we're.
Most likely. And keeping in mind that it's not an immediate tow, most of these vehicles unless it does qualify for the C V C, for the C V C as an in-op vehicle. Most of them we have to mark and tag. So we leave that notice on the vehicle warning the owner that if they don't. Comply that we will be back to tow. So keeping in mind too, that it's the process of removing the vehicle, which is, you know. At least a 72 hour waiting period after the vehicle's marked and tagged.
Okay, thank you. Finally, I'll, I'll just circle back to the very beginning of, of the item and, and talk about the improvements at City Hall. I, I appreciate that. I, I see that. I'm a little bewildered by some of it, but. The, the, please walk, stay on this side of the, the hallway when we're walking. It seems, I mean, I guess we have to do it, but. I, I would just suggest if there's a way for efficiency sake to. Do certain things, group them at once, if, if it makes any sense to do so. So specifically, I'm, I'm talking about the, the touchless fixtures in the bathrooms now. And I don't know how far in the building we've done it. I know that on the 18th floor, I've seen the. The touchless soap dispenser, which, which is great. But then we're still touching the handle of the, the sink to, 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 to wash our hands, right? So, so if there's a way to pair it where there's a touchless sink and touchless soap, even though it's only through half the building, and so at least we get through that first. I, I want to kind of see things complete and done. Rather than partially done and then we live with that for a while, but that's just a preference of mine. And I don't even know if we're going to go to touchless sinks, to be honest, but I, I just offer that. I assume that's the next step. And, and if you're taking suggestions. The, the tech museum or the, the building formerly called the tech museum, I forget what it's called now. They have that, I think it's a Dyson thing where it's like also a, a blow dryer and a hand wash and a thing, everything's just right there. It was like a T. And we probably don't have the budget for that, but that's pretty nifty. So anyways, I'll yield with that.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Just want to make sure you can hear me fine. I was having a lot of issues this morning.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So yeah, appreciate the, the conversation and. I do want to piggyback a little bit on what my colleagues have been saying, but I will say that. One thing that was really helpful from staff and this actually, I got this information a couple of weeks ago. From D O T. Was the thorough explanation in regards to why we are not responding as usual, why we're not responding to the 311 abandoned vehicle reports. And instead why we're doing a more proactive approach, trying to be equitable, covering the whole city. I think, you know, traditionally we, we feel as though calls for service can help identify. Right? The priority hotspots to, to be able to go out for calls. But I would agree with staff's analysis here, their assessment that the. With parking, with the banned vehicle calls for service, it's actually been the opposite and, and, and it's been the vast majority of them. Are not necessarily the most egregious abandoned vehicles. And so responding to calls for service. Actually is, is counterintuitive to try and really get the, the most egregious calls. And that's really just a problem of, of. Sort of, I don't know, user error, I guess I'll call it, right? Where, where you get just a few super users reporting all sorts of cars and, and then. You get people lost amongst that, right? You get the, the one person that calls and has the actual legitimately dependent vehicle or vehicle that should be cited or towed. And because we're now in this current system or even before previously, because they're getting drowned out by some of these other callers. It was just a challenge. And so I would agree, this was a challenge before. But the, I guess the, the one thing that I wanted to echo what my colleague said was, I, I do think that there, there should be. We should try to find some kind of hybrid of, of really identifying those, you know, the, the individuals that are calling in a truly egregious vehicle. And when we tell them through the, either through the app or when we as council members inform them. That, you know, their call for service is just not going to get responded to and that they're going to have to sit. And cross their fingers that, you know, the proactive patrol is going to hit that car at some point. And, and so that's the challenge. I, I do. Just kind of going back to what I was saying, I'm sorry, I didn't finish the first complete thought was that. When staff provided me an explanation as to why we had shifted this service, which was because of the, the, the nature of the calls for service. And obviously because of staffing, staff that are, you know, affected just like everybody else through. This pandemic and they've got, you know, kids working or kids going to school at home. So they're working from home. Obviously the contractors not, not being there and those contracts not being in place and, and so. I did appreciate that. And I actually have, have had that conversation with constituents of mine at community meetings. And, and when I was able to give them that explanation, it was much better received. So the one critique would be, I think, we just haven't communicated that well enough initially, right? We haven't communicated well enough on, on why we've shifted the service, how we've shifted the service. And, and so I think that needs to be done. But then two, I do think that if we're going to be continuing this, you know, this new response or lack of response and really just the proactive enforcement, I think we do need to dive a little deeper. So I do appreciate that staff is saying, sure, we can come back and, and have a little bit of that discussion, see what else we may be able to do. How do we incorporate again, some of those, you know, some of those, those, those calls for service that may actually help us prioritize maybe the, the proactive patrol that's going on out there from parking enforcement. And that's it. Thanks for, for staff and to my colleagues too, for, for your input on it.
Thank you. Councilor Arenas.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, I, I think it was, and I hope Carolina Camarena is still online with us. Because I think she was the one, I apologize, Carolina, if it's, if I'm accidentally targeting you. But I thought you had said in a portion of your presentation that you were focusing or you're keeping your eye on 95117. And so I wanted to learn a little bit more about why that is.
Thank you for asking, Councilmember Arenas. I was the one who brought up 95117 and I'm keeping an eye on it based on information that we're getting from the county and working with our community and engagement branch. So I believe they have that information specifically, if I'm, if I'm not misspeaking, so have either Andrea or Michelle McGurk on the phone. And if you want to jump in, I'd greatly appreciate it. But I believe the reason we're keeping an eye, an eye on it is around the Cadillac Winchester area. So I will though, transfer it over to Andrea or Michelle thereon for the specifics on that. I can also just get back to you, Councilmember Arenas, with the details, if that's okay.
You, you're muted, Councilmember. Councilor Arenas, we're not able to hear you right now.
Um, so Mayor, this is Michelle McGurk in response to Councilmember Arenas's question. We are working and meeting weekly with the county's community health and business engagement team leaders. And in some of our recent meetings, we've asked them because, because we are tracking and, and looking at the case numbers for each of the zip codes in the city. And we, and 95117 is one that we noticed had, had gone up. So we keep asking them for more details. Part of the reason we want to keep an eye on that one is that we do know that it's a, we've had a long history with areas like Cadillac Winchester and some of the other neighborhoods that have been part of Project Hope or some of the predecessors to that historically. So you know, throughout our city, we do have these little pockets that have a lot of need, have a lot of poverty and unique situations. So our staff is working with the county health department to monitor so we can move very nimbly to respond to emerging needs.
Thank you, Michelle.
I appreciate it. I apologize earlier. I was having the whole conversation on this and I thought it was going just well. I, I appreciate the response. Thank you, Michelle. I'm, I, although I'm looking at the dashboard for COVID and this is as of 9/16/20. And I see that nine, like 95123 has been, is there, there's an increase or 95136 has also been an increase. And there's just others of codes that have been on a rise. That one just never really jumped up at me. Of course, you know, the, the highest are, are 95116 and 95122, 95111, you know, this kind of typical zip codes that we've been hearing about. And so it, it would be great to have some additional information offline if, if, if that is, if you could please provide it to me. I just want to make sure that the reasons why we're prioritizing or keeping an eye on certain neighborhoods. As I know that my colleagues would have their own suggestions or recommendations for, for, to keeping some, some up for their own reasons. So anyways, I, I'd love to learn a little bit, bit more in terms of why, why we're paying more attention to, to some, some numbers. Now, I, I'm going to go to the testing piece. Oh, actually, before you leave, Carolina, I, I really appreciated the present, your presentation and the piece about having some of the, our local influencers providing videos. Would really love to see, I don't know if you've been distributing, and I apologize if I haven't responded an email or caught it on email. If you've given us some, some type of like social media kit or something that we should be using, I'm more than happy to promote those. Because I absolutely agree that those videos should be of people that, you know, just speak to the community with the language and just other attributes that, that might ease the messaging. So let me know if there's any way that I can get access to that and I'm more than happy to help. And then we can send it out to our schools just as well. So great, great work on that. And I love the, the behavioral messaging and social distancing. And I think there's a lot more work that we need to do because there's plenty of people who still, when you're, you know, at the grocery store, they're not, they don't have their mask quite right on, right? You know, they, they're somehow doing it their way, right? And maybe putting it, putting all of us at risk. So I, I love that you continue to message this. So, so I, I appreciate it. That's it for that piece, Carolina. So if you want to send me the stuff, love to, to promote it and great, great work with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Arenas. And just, just for everybody's information, we will be preparing some toolkits. And we will send them to all the council members and the mayor to help amplify and spread the word. So that is coming. And don't forget that you all will have homework and we will be reaching out to you and asking you to help us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love that kind of homework. I love it. Okay, wonderful. And so the, the second item I wanted to talk about was, and we didn't really talk about testing, although, you know, there was some strategic communication plan goals on, on testing and just reiterating that messaging. And I totally understand that. I, I just wonder, we, we've made some progress in terms of, you know, and this was mainly with Councilmember Carrasco. And as far as I think advocacy and getting some of this testing sites more available to certain areas. And then also not only just more available, but having a walk-up availability, because that just makes it that much easier. I know that, that there's some folks have said this, you know, when they, when it was online only, it was, it seemed like it was like a legal document. They needed to be a, a lawyer to fill out. So it has been really much easier for a community to participate in. And so I applaud that. And I've had quite a number of pop-up sites in my district. The other piece of that is I'm still wondering whether the turnaround time for testing has gotten any better. And I don't know what that, what that turnaround timeline has been and, and if it's been improved over time. Just wondering if we're all moving and, you know, in, in making sure that we have this really tight turnaround because there's no worst thing to find out that you've tested positive and now endangered your colleagues or your family or whomever else you live with. How is that going?
Well, part of what we've clarified with the county is that, that, you know, the testing is very much in their swim lane. Doctor, Dr. Marty Finstershite has done, I think, a remarkable job in scaling up the, the amount of testing and make it more available through walk-ups and other aspects, as you mentioned. I actually haven't been in contact with them recently about the latest on the turnaround time. I don't know if Lee's able to, to jump in. He's on the more regular calls. If you've gotten any, I know they were, I know the county was concerned and was pushing to reduce the turnaround time, but I don't have anything more detailed than that. Lee, if you're able to jump in. If not, okay, there you go. Perfect.
Yeah. So I, I honestly don't have the exact number of days that it's taking. I do know in last week's call with the county EOC, they were quite relieved that the lab space has been able to turn around tests within a, a three today or three to four day period. And they had obviously been starting to prioritize the actual positive COVID test first. So that if you tested positive for COVID-19, you were getting notified well in advance. They were still working with the state and some of the labs to push that timeframe up. So we can follow up with the council on, on what the average is right now. I know that during the fires, the average was, was really low because so few people were getting tested because of the smoke. But again, we want to look at the larger average when testing is at full capacity. So we can look back with the council with that.
Actually, this is Jackie from the housing department. I just talked to Keely about this issue. And they have a rolling seven-day average that they publish. And right now, it's 1.4 days is the amount of time. So they have significantly reduced, but it changes every seven days. It's constantly moving.
Yeah, no, the 1.7 was when we had some of the smoke and some of the fires. So there was smaller amounts of testing going out. But again, the, the last reporting period is correct. It was 1.4 days.
And that's great because I know that with Carolina's messaging and she talked about the support services for if you are found to, to test positive, that you have these alternatives, but the important thing is to find out whether it's true or not. And I'll tell you, for, in my household, there was somebody who was, who tested positive. And our insurance under the city of San Jose took almost two weeks. Now, this person just because, you know, wanted to be safe, isolated, safe, self-isolated. And nobody else was infected. And, you know, is beyond the, the 14-day, of course, and all is, all is well. But it took, for my family, two weeks. And it was because we kept calling to find out, hey, how, how's it going? Do you have the results yet? And I just couldn't believe that it took that long. And I felt like, well, you know, maybe we should go to the, a county-funded site instead. But I thought, well, I don't want to waste resources from the community that, the other community who may not have access to health insurance could receive. And so, you know, I, I'm concerned about our own plan, especially with so many of us being essential service workers and having some exposure. So it, it, it would be great to figure out how our health plan is, is responding and if that's improved. Now, that was back in the end of July. So I don't know if that's improved and, but it, it would be great to just have our HR, if Jennifer could look into that and see if, if, if that response has gotten any better.
We'll follow up on that.
Thank you. Thank you. The last piece is, you know, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse because I feel bad for the horse. But I know we've been talking about abandoned cars today. And, you know, it's, it's an item that we all as council members have had to deal with, you know, right from the beginning of your service. That's like the number one call aside from, you know, other public safety issues. But, but I am concerned to hear that there's so many abandoned cars. And I don't know if it's a symptom of people living in their homes. So to me, it means there's something else that is happening that maybe in, in places where there, you might have not seen as many as before. There is a segment, and we may all have segments of our community well, where we find more abandoned cars or there's more overcrowding. I don't know if this is maybe a sign that people have been losing their homes and now they're overcrowding and living with, with family members. Or if it's that people are actually living in their cars and, and do we have some backup solutions in terms of our a, a safe parking? I know that we originally had tried that for families. Of course, we found out that that does not work for families. But it's not to say that it does not work because we, we actually fund this. And there's a lot of other programs who actually do and do it very successfully on faith-based organization parking lots. So I wonder if there's something else that we can, as, as you are all looking into this abandoned car issue, if, if we can also tie it in and see if it has to do with, with needing a, a safe parking program that could help support people. I, I don't know what, what the issue is, other than what I've heard my colleagues say. But, but I dare to think that, that maybe there's some folks who are losing their homes. And, and we need to be responsive and in terms of trying to figure out a solution as best as we can.
We'll, we'll take that in as part of the analysis that we do. A significant number of the abandoned vehicles have always been folks who are living in their cars. And the appropriate response to that is, is tricky and trickier, but I think it's a, it's a very good piece that we should take back in, as we do our analysis of this, of that service and what we think the appropriate path is going forward. Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah. And, you know, and as we're moving forward to a recovery stage, Kip, I know that, is that, you know, you have a, a great graphic in terms of how we're going to move forward. Although I, I don't know how we are going to decide what gets prioritized. Is it, is it the items that we hear being spoken of the most, the calls? And we all know that the folks who make the calls or have the resources to call, we, we always know tho, those aren't the hardest to reach and, and the most difficult or the most vulnerable of our populations. And so I also like for some consideration in terms of how we are prioritizing some of the issues that are, that our residents are bringing. I'll use, for example, my district. In my district, we, and probably as a council member, he menaces, but I won't speak for him. But we happen to have a lot of space out here. And so a lot of the youngsters who have really great-looking cars and just a lot of time in their hands are doing a lot of donuts and just a lot of sideshows. And that is something that is really increasing in calls and emails and concerns to the point that I think one of my residents actually put some barriers on their, on their street where, you know, they weren't supposed to. But I think they, they just got that frustrated that they didn't need to take it into their own hands. And so, you know, this is something that I feel it, it, it's an item that, that I think it is important enough because it is detrimental to the safety and, and the safety and wellbeing of our, of our pedestrians and other motorists. I know yesterday in District Five, we had another cyclist, a death of another cyclist. And so those are the items that I think Department of Transportation in terms of quality of life that I think are, for me, would deem the most important. When it really impacts the safety and wellbeing of our community. And so I'd like to know, how are you all going to, as we are moving into a recovery phase? How are you all going to prioritize the type of concerns that we hear from our community and how we will address them?
Would you like me to take a kind of a top level at that now? We'll come back obviously with more detail, but I think, yeah. So top, top level, we look, we look at four basic questions when we, when we do any prioritization. And then there are two particular lenses that we pay a lot of attention to. On top of that, one is, so the four basic questions are, what is the, the impact to the community? What is, you know, what is the change we see because of delivering the service? Second question, does, does this mitigate risk? Do we avoid something bad happening by doing this? And how much, or does it enable an opportunity, right? The third question is, is this, is there a time-critical element to this? Do, can we do this? If we wait a year and do this, does it have the same effect? Or do we have to do it today or, or now or never, right? And then the, the last question which balances those is how difficult, how complex, how much effort is required? And so those four questions help us understand both the outcome in terms of what's important to the community and the complexity of doing them. And then we can begin the prioritization conversation. There are two additional lenses which are extremely important and critical that we apply to everything that we do. One is the race and equity lens. What is the, what is the disproportionate impact on on communities of color, of low and low income people, of of minorities, of of folks of different gender status, right? The second piece is, what does this have to do in terms of climate and climate change? What is the impact on our our climate and and the long term work that we need to do beyond this COVID crisis to do with climate? So I think as we prioritize very high level, those are some of the the key questions that we ask and try to answer ideally with data as we go into the question of what do we, what do we prioritize versus what do what do we not? We'll come back with more detail around around how we do that and what those criteria are. But at a very top level, that's sort of how we think about it strategically.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Other questions from the council? I just had a couple. First, just on the the rents obligations now, Jackie, under A B thirty eighty eight. And I will do our best to try to make sure we're getting the information out. I just want to be clear, I understand because I remember reading this a couple of times in the paper and trying to figure it out. Does the twenty five percent of rent that has to be paid for tenants to avoid eviction, is that twenty five percent of the total back rent? Or does that also include current rent?
To make sure I get this right. And then I think is Christopher here from the city attorney's office?
Yes, I'm here. I can I can answer that question.
Thanks.
So so mayor, it's twenty five percent of rent from September, so this month through January of next year. So it's only those months.
So they have to pay current for the current month, if you define current as twenty five percent.
They don't have to pay it each month. They only have to pay that by the end of January. So they don't have to be current until the end of January. And they must make up twenty five percent of the balance for those months.
Okay.
So September through January.
That's a little better. Thank you. Appreciate that help.
Sure.
I know there'd be plenty of folks wrestling with this and we'll we'll all be working hard to try to get accurate information out. A lot of families are, I know, at the edge right now. Carolina, I really appreciate your presentation. I had some questions about what this, the the source of information is that helping you and your team really figure out what the content of the prompts should be and where they're targeted. And I'm wondering is, are we getting any information from the county or from other maybe public health authorities nationally or elsewhere? That's telling us first, this is the area you need to target for noncompliance. Like, these are the behaviors you really need to focus on above all others. Is there any good hard data out there telling us anything that's not self evident and obvious that we all know, which of course we need to wear masks, et cetera? And then secondly, is there any information we're getting that's telling us what messages really actually change behavior?
Those are great, great questions, mayor. So let me, let me try and and provide you some background and just everyone in general. What I should have more clearly stated is that we are using Santa Clara County Public Health data to prioritize the communities that we will do outreach with. So the county has identified subcodes nine five one one zero, nine five one one one, one one two, one one six, one two seven, one two two, and one four eight as the high priority areas. And in the business side, they have identified what they call areas of concern downtown East San Jose, Little Saigon Business District, East Santa Clara Business Association, Alamo, East Santa Clara Story Road as areas of concern. So we are using the county's public health data. And of course, that's based on COVID cases on the residential side. And for the business side, it aligns with the residential side in terms of COVID cases, but also the number of small businesses who are most impacted by COVID.
I'm sorry, I probably misled you with the way I asked the question because I think I used the word where. And I guess what I really meant was what kinds of activity? That's what I probably should have asked more clearly, which is, that is, we we know there's a lot of ways that human beings are interacting with one one another. And we're learning that some of those means are not particularly risky and some are. And I guess that's where I was really going with this. I'm sorry.
Carolina, if you'd like, I can take that or if you want to take it first.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Kip.
Yeah, so this, so basically what we're trying to do is a kind of a three step process with this. And and we actually honestly could could use additional information from the public outside from the county and other partners on this to to help us. And this is one of the areas we've been reaching out to them on and could use additional coordination. But what we've been doing is we've been using our own safety branch and some of the contractors we have to do research to identify of all of the behavior changes that are out there, what's the short list of behaviors that have the most impact? And that people are actually likely to change behavior on based on messaging, right? And so once we've narrowed it down to that, the next step is, what is the message that will get them to actually change that behavior? And we've been tapping with, for those first two, we've been working with folks like Stanford. We've been working with folks like Widow Brian. We've been working with other Zen City and others to help us narrow down some of that. And then on the second piece, we've been asking the question around the message. We've been working with the behavioral insights team out of the United Kingdom to rapidly test a series of messages related to those behaviors that we've identified that then test for people's retention, which is an indicator of their likeliness to actually do behavior change. It's not an absolute all the way throughput. If you're doing a PhD, it wouldn't be the best. But for what we've got, it allows us in a forty eight hour period, we're able to test the message on about three thousand different people in Spanish, in English, and in Vietnamese. And they will take a randomized version of the test and and react to different materials and indicate by actually taking the test, we then see which messages stick in what language and with what demographic group. And out of that, then Carolina and her team can build, you know, where do we, okay, this message sticks within the Spanish speaking community. Let's make sure that we hit the buses that are going through predominantly Spanish speaking areas with a wraparound with this exact message. So it's a three step process. One, identify the shortlist of behaviors that are most susceptible, most important to change and most susceptible to change. Two, test them with a data driven methodology to see what are the messages that stick that are likely to influence that behavioral change? And three, build the campaign out around that. And so where we need more help is actually making sure that we are aligned with our our county counterparts and that they agree with us on what are the messages that are where people are 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 the ones that are most important and people are most likely to change. The rest of that, we sort of have in our pipeline in terms of contracts and support on behavioral health insights and the ability to get the message out.
Kip, thank you, and and thank you, Carolina. That that really does get quite a bit of what I was trying to get at. Because we, as you know, we're having ongoing conversations of county leadership. And and, you know, we we have been seeking to try to get data through them as much as we can. And maybe it would help if we just did the reverse. If if I know Lee is on those calls and perhaps if you guys wouldn't mind servicing sort of, hey, here's what the assumptions we're making that are driving our decisions about where to invest our time and energy on messaging. And we can then just vet those with them and and say, you know, you guys tell us if we're off or not. I I'm guessing you're already trying to do that through the E O Cs, but I'm happy to be a conduit of that information, at least to get to to some of the leadership.
Yeah, you know, we've had some discussion through the the E P I O's mayor. I do think whether, you know, one of the calls this week, it'd be good to bring up with the county leadership group, though. I think, you know, their their general approach countywide has been kind of a a big net to to cast and and try and get as many messages to as many people as possible and give it our limited dollars, we've been much more targeted. And I I think a conversation there is is probably overdue. So you and I can bring that forward this week.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm a big fan of targeted, particularly in an election year when people are spending millions and millions of dollars. A lot of messages, we've really got to pick our spots. You know, I I guess then the question would be, Kip, is there anything surprising that we're learning? I mean, I understand that you're using sort of stickiness of the message to be a surrogate or or proxy for effectiveness of the message. Is there anything we're learning about the stickiness?
I think I think the, I think the thing that I, there there are two things that that struck me as I was going through a deeper dive in the behavioral insights data. One is that across communities, it is really caring about other people that that is important.
Appreciate it.
And what was the other thing was interesting is there are subtleties within who you care about or how you talk about that that have cultural variations. So for example, within the Vietnamese language, some of the, some of the language around elderly and protecting the elderly just like went through the roof on the numbers, right? Similarly, within the the Spanish speaking community, references to family resonated, protecting family resonated much more, right? So you you have the same message of care about others works across all of the the different demographics. But exactly who you're more inclined to be worried about shifts a little bit within the language pieces. And I thought that was that was very, very telling. And and it also suggests that the you know, the kind of, and Oscar in our in our compliance group has been clear with it with me on this. The, you know, you've got to do it and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, you know, come down heavy handed. If you don't, it's not really that effective. It really is about reminding people about why they want to do this to help others is core to how 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 the effective messages seem to be.
Thank you. That's super helpful. And particularly as we're thinking about, you know, the trade offs about where we're spending resources, for example, on enforcement. I'm I'm guessing that, you know, an ounce of good messaging can save a pound of enforcement. And so I think that work that Carolina and her team is doing is really critical. I had a question for for Heather. I know this may sound like a bit self evident. The answer might be, but I just wanted to ask it anyway. Why is it that we only have fifty or sixty percent of our staff available for vehicle abatement?
Sure, it's a layered answer for you here, Mr. Mayor. We have just standing vacancies prior to COVID. We had a few vacancies in the P T C O office and we've lost several staff through other opportunities. So we're we're down quite a few F T Es. On top of that, we have a few redeployments remaining from COVID. But those have dwindled as of late. And then the other big factor for us is we have a lot of staff that currently are balancing work with being at home assisting with online education for their families. So we have a lot of staff that are out on leaves related to that.
Right, okay. And to the extent we do have many members of our team that are juggling all those family responsibilities. I guess maybe this is a question for John, just thinking about the the learning pods sites that we have up. Do we have, I'm sorry, this is John Sisarali, forgive me, John Arista. How, I I know that there was, I think we have eight pods now, we're trying to get to twenty four. Am I mistaken about that? And how are we doing in terms of being able to at least address the needs of, for example, city staff? So that they can be free to be able to return to work and and do so feeling confident about where their kids are.
I think for the city staff question, I was going to actually ask Jennifer Shembry to weigh in because she, we've been very proactive about that. And it's it's kind of an interesting, interesting answer, if Jennifer is still on.
She had to, she had to jump off.
Okay.
I can't take the question, but Jennifer jumped off.
Nice. But yeah, please, please, Kelly.
No, I said I can't take the question.
Okay. So I, so we have pushed out a lot of information and actually stood up the initial branch within the E O C, initially specifically just to support city employees. What we found at this point is that one, people are still figuring it out, especially as things are changing around school. And two, folks are are the the solutions that we're able to offer are not necessarily meeting their needs. And there's still a reluctance to send people back into a group environment, especially when their needs are uncertain. But we continue to be surveying and reaching out to the employees and are having discussions about what do we make available to our employees to deal with some of the issues that Heather surfaced, which are which are pretty universal at this point. On the uptake of the utilization for the eight pods, is John Sisarali or somebody from Parks and Rec on here? Great, go for it, Mr. Sisarali.
Sure. Thanks for the question, Mayor John Sisarali, Director of Parks Recreation and Wood Services, also leading the childcare branch in the E O C. I don't know exactly how many pods we have set up right now. We've got about a hundred and fifty kids enrolled as of last week. That's between the all day learning pod where they're there at a community center or location with their technology, you know, with with adult supervision. And then we have the after school program, which has actually much lower enrollment. And that's just also at a community center, but after school hours for a few hours for homework help and some recreation and things like that. Like Kip said, when we first were setting up the learning pods, city staff had the first crack at them. Because city staff is employed, they would have had to pay for it, but it's a really good rate. It's cheaper than most other care that would have been comparable. But we had almost no interest in terms of people signing up. So city staff just haven't been taking advantage of our programs. Our program also works on referrals, so mostly these kids are referred through the schools. Once the teachers identify a need, we have also opened enrollment up to kids that would or families that would qualify for any of our scholarship programs. And so for them, all of this is free.
So John, I know we won't resolve this on this in this meeting, but just want to elevate this question because I know it's evident in everyone's mind. But you and Kip and Dave and everybody, just we've got employees who are not able to do the work we need them to do because of childcare responsibilities, but they're not taking advantage of childcare service, childcare, but obviously learning pods. They're not taking advantage of the service we're offering. And where's where's that disconnect? Does anybody have any theories?
No, not particularly. You know, we, when we set up preschool and we were going to do in person preschool, which we still are, but it's really limited. More than eighty percent of the parents that we surveyed about it ahead of time said they weren't prepared to put their kids in preschool because of the because of the pandemic. So there may be some of that going on, you know, certainly city employees, because especially ones that have to go out into the field and work around people are at a higher risk. And and they're exposing themselves. And we see some of that in the workforce. We see some of that in the participants. You know, we've had kids test positive that are in the programs too. So maybe it's that fear, but I don't, I don't have my finger on exactly why city staff is not taking advantage of the opportunity.
I'll just jump in, I think, so because I think mayor, you know, that has to be part of the conversation that that we're we're talking about here and and how we do our analysis on city services. I I can tell you, we've got, I think the numbers are forty percent of our staff are working remotely. The other sixty percent are either working in the field or at city facilities. So it's really drilling down on that forty percent who are working remotely, many of which I do believe are working at home effectively and and can do their job quite effectively. But there is a subset that we are talking about here that is having impacts on our service delivery. And we need to kind of drill down on that and figure out how we either mitigate that or or adjust to it. So that's definitely part of the conversation.
Thanks, Dave. And and then I know, again, I'm asking a question you guys, I'm sure have already tried solutions like this. But is there any quick redesign of the three one one app that we can implement that simply makes it clear to folks that an abandoned vehicle is not an occupied vehicle, to just stop reporting occupied vehicles?
I, I have to risk adventuring out a little bit. I think part of, you know, if if we go back again to the audit and some of the discussions that we started before COVID, one of the questions that we had is is what do we define? How do we help define more clearly what we're able to do? As you know, when you've got a ninety three percent miss rate, clearly there's a disconnect between customer expectations and what we're communicating. So I I would say, I I won't go so far as to characterize it as simple because in my experience, nothing ever is. But I think I think now is the opportunity to clarify what the service we're delivering is and what we are not doing as a service delivery. And what that may mean, just to be very blunt, is that there are probably some super users who who And what that may mean, just to be very blunt, is that there are probably some super users who, who may feel differently than that, that we may have to spend some time with. And we need to be clear about how we are supporting, especially the homeless folks who are living out of their cars and what are responses there. So short answer to your question, I believe this is a good time for us to redefine and communicate uh, what we need from users as they bring in the information. So that we can be more effective in using the three one one to actually respond to abandoned vehicles, which are a real issue for neighbors. And to actually respond to, to ones that may be a security code, a, a, a hazard of some sort.
Okay.
Jim, it looks like you wanted to add?
No, that's fine, Kip. In the interest of time, I'll wait. If there's more questions on this, I did have something to add, but in the interest of time, I'll hold.
Okay. I, I was just going on the three one one app, I, you know, and after you get through the login again, uh, which I know we're working on, right?
Working on that one. We're definitely working on that.
After you get through the login again, you know, when you push the abandoned vehicle button, it, it would just, you know, I know it sounds too simplistic, but I'll just throw it out there anyway. If there was simply a drop screen that said, hey, if you're reporting a vehicle that you think someone's living in, it's not abandoned, please send this to homeless concerns or something like that and we can come out with it.
Yeah, your, 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 your instinct echoes what we found with user experience, is that when people are communicated to about the response rate and whether this or that won't be responded to. They, they tend to comply or tend to at least understand. Now you're gonna add, Jim, go for it.
Yeah, I will, Mayor. We, we did go through that in the audit process. And I think Heather probably can illuminate on this as well. What we found is the homeless concerns hotline and the work of the outreach staff probably got overwhelmed. And so we utilized parking compliance staff through the vehicle abatement uh, three one one process to go out and assess. And if the vehicle is there and if somebody was in it, then they would refer it to the homeless concerns line. We just had more parking control officers that could probably get there quicker than the homeless concerns line could. And we probably viewed encampments that had more people as a greater need for the outreach staff to address than a mobile uh, person who is sheltering in their vehicle and moving around. It's an elusive uh, challenge to address. And uh, it, maybe it's time to revisit. I mean, you bring up a fair question uh, through the audit, that's where we arrived at. That we would still utilize parking control officers to make the initial assessment. If they found people living in it, they would then refer to the homeless concerns line to have somebody go out, rather than the homeless concerns people looking for a vehicle that a lot of times would not be there. So, so that's, so if it goes to the homeless concerns line, then they're looking for somebody that may be living in a vehicle. And we, we start another process of, you know, searching for something that may not be there. It, it's not, not an easy situation, but that's, that's what I recall out of that process.
Yep, fair point. All right, thank you. Appreciate the difficulty here. Uh, I'll, I'll leave the, the most important question for John Sisarali. John, if you, if you happen to still be with us, um, getting a lot of questions from folks who want to see Danny the Dragon. What exactly are the steps uh, to be able to reopening Happy Hollow?
Well, uh, bad news first. Uh, even once we do reopen initially, nobody's gonna be playing with Danny the Dragon. It's too high contact of a touch. But they might be able to see him from, from afar. Um, uh, we've been working on a plan that sort of creates a one way route through the zoo with the animals, right? Low touch, uh, limited groups, uh, timed entries, things like that. Real, really, the, the tug and pull is what uh, Kip actually mentioned uh, earlier in three point one, where there's this chess game where you only have a finite number of pieces on the board. And you're trying to move them around in these different programs. And so we're trying to be sure that opening the zoo won't take away from a program that we're trying to ramp up or take care of, you know, for disaster work.
Right. Okay, thanks, John. Councilmember Crossco.
Hi, thank you. Well, a lot of great information, like always. Uh, we missed you last week, uh, like Mr. Beekman mentioned. Uh, nice to hear from all of you again. Uh, and you know, the only thing I would suggest, uh, and I know that it's a verbal report, we don't get the actual written uh, presentation, but I'd love to be able to see it, especially when there's new information. It's difficult to uh, write down all the notes, even though I have my staff trying to, you know, uh, you know, uh, uh, take everything down. It's just, it's just very, very difficult in order for us to get that information out to our constituents. So if we could get something uh, from you, that would be fantastic. I just want to make a quick, quick note in terms of the comments and the reactions that I'm also getting from our residents, as you can imagine. Uh, I'm just gonna echo and, and save you all the, the same speech that the other council members have already mentioned in terms of, you know, abandoned cars. You know, the list goes on and on and on. Uh, you've heard it, because I'm sure you've gotten the calls from my staff. Uh, we get the same, uh, the same kind of uh, responses that we're, we're being negligent, that we're hiding behind COVID, that we're using it as an excuse. I do want to just say the following, that even pre-COVID, because I, I, I happen to represent a district that has had underinvestment for, you know, historically. Uh, you, uh, from the moment that I walked into this office, uh, you know, I, I was bombarded by a lot of comments that, you know, I couldn't use past history to hide behind. And that, you know, the cracked pavement, the lack of lighting, the, the overgrown trees uh, were creating hazards and safety conditions that were not favorable to our children who were walking to and from school unsupervised many times. And so uh, this has only exacerbated a lot of those situations. So I, I, I just want to be able to give that feedback. Uh, many of you have already heard from me uh, numerous times when we meet. So I, I'm gonna leave it at that. Uh, but, but the other thing that I want to say is, you know, th- this of course, and, and I know that this is, uh, this sounds like a broken record since March. And since we went into um, into quarantine or into shelter in place since March, what was it, thirteenth, March fifteenth? It's all a blur at this point. But um, we're, we're having to experience and to live with a, a new normal. And it seems like every week or every couple of weeks, that new normal changes just a little bit depending on what uh, what new guidelines we're, we're being given, you know. Now it's alfresco, now it's not. Uh, the, you know, our, our um, our hair salons have opened, now they closed up again. Uh, you know, there's, there's always something, then it's not. It's airborne, maybe it isn't. Uh, put on a mask, maybe it's not gonna work. I mean, it, it, there's always something that's changing. What I do know is that for those that are, for those of us that are lucky enough to be connected and to be able to communicate with each other through, through Zoom or through whatever digital uh, platform we have, and now we're, we're, we're investing in, in uh, in enough infrastructure so that our kiddos can continue on with their education. We're still discovering nonetheless that this is not effective enough for a lot of folks or a lot of uh, the issues that we're dealing with. And I'll give you an example. As we're dealing with, with uh, other types of emergencies that are coming up. How do we do CPR training? How do we do CERT training? We, we really can't do it over Zoom. We really can't uh, teach um, you know, uh, CPR or how to, you know, wrap a, a Band-Aid exactly the way it should be, or how to dress a wound, or how to compress a chest through Zoom. And so we're going to have to learn or, or understand the guidelines and how to move forward in this new world and how to experience this new normal. And I don't know what that is. And I'm putting it out there because Mayor, I know that you're meeting with the leadership at the county level and with uh, public health experts. But, but especially for a district, and I think this goes for everybody. But I think especially for those districts that are very marginalized and that don't get the information in the way that um, that maybe other people who are more, more techie savvy. We need to be able to get out there and, and provide a safety net. And most of the times, that safety net is still in person. And so how do we do it so that we can still be safe? And those numbers that are, are skyrocketing in districts like in mine and Maya Sparsa's district and uh, corners of uh, council member Arenas's and, and council member Berales's, you know, you know the zip codes. We need to figure out, how do we continue to do that? I know that in other cities, they're, they're still meeting in parks, safe distancing, they're, they're still doing some, some other kind of creative ways. But we're going to have to figure out how I, I train my, my residents and how I get CERT training so that when the big one hits, I've got a whole team of people ready to rock and roll uh, and, and making sure that their neighbors are safe. And, and that's one of the biggest concerns that I have, now that we had the, the fear of the fires just in my own backyard. When we, when we were just on alert. And so we know that the next big whatever is coming. And we just don't know when. And so being prepared for that is, is, is unnerving. Because we have the pandemic still to deal with. And this pandemic has just thrown us in, indoors. Which has really raised, I have to tell you, it's really raised the anxiety levels of everyone. And so i- imagine that anxiety being coupled with a lack of information or an inability to have that information because of whatever reasons. We, I can list them, but you know them already. And so I'll spare you. So we, we need guidelines uh, Mayor and uh, and my, and the whole team of uh, uh, that's working on this in terms of how we're going to move this city forward with uh, with, with a pandemic so that we can stay safe. But uh, but you know, I, I was chairing the, the health task force. So you can only imagine right now, my surprise, as your, as your reporting Kip, this wonderful research that you're doing. This is the first time that I hear about it. And I would have liked to have heard about it just a little bit sooner in terms of where you're getting this research and how I could have disseminated some of this information to some really amazing individuals that happen to be serving on this task force and who are working. You know, uh, you know, they're, they're the boots on the ground. And I know that you're just still in the process of this research. But nonetheless, it's, I think it's important research, and I think it's important information for me to have had uh, sooner versus later and, and most definitely before today. So, so he- here's the other thing. What's interesting to me is that you, you said that especially in the Spanish speaking community. That one of the, the guiding principles or one of the guiding messages is uh, uh, you know, what I call it al prohimo. Or, or that which is uh, uh, messaging towards the, uh, our good na- you know, uh, being a good neighbor or, or uh, or what do you call it? I didn't know, I don't know if you said it was like family oriented or how you, that's been my message from day one. It's like, you're not necessarily doing it to, for yourself, you're doing it for the person that's living with you. You're doing it for your abuelita, you're doing it for your comadre, you're doing it for that older uncle that lives with you who has an underlying condition. And the reason why I've been using that message is because I'm Mexican. I lived with my mother, who actually lived with me until the day that she passed. She took her last dying breath in the room right next to where I'm sitting right now. I'm a, a living embodiment of what the east side is, but of what the Latino community is. And so I'm glad that you're getting reinforcement and verification and confirmation of what those messages are in the Latino community. But uh, uh, without me being a scholar, I guess, I could have given you that message, that the Latino community responds quite well when you talk about family, the elder, and those who are sick in our own households, that message resonates. But, but we're, we don't know, we can't exchange this if we're not having this kind of communication. And yet we've met many times over, and yet this is the first time that I hear about it. So anyway, so, so the last thing I'm gonna say is uh, when I presented the recommendations from the health task force. One of the, the, what I think is one of the most important recommendations of all the recommendations that were presented was the open communication, the ongoing communication and the collaboration between the city and the county. That task force still does not have a seat at the table. And so I'm glad that, uh, Mayor, you have some ongoing communication, and I don't know how often that is. But those individuals who, like I said, are, are boots on the ground, who are, are in the community, who know this community probably better than any one of us council members, any one of our staff members, any one of the county board of supervisors. Because they're dealing with them on a daily basis, they should still, they should have a seat at that table. And yet we still don't have anybody there. And so I'm going to make one more plea that, that they be given that opportunity so that they can relay the most vital information. Because our numbers continue to go up and we don't know how to control this. We don't know how to get this message out. The numbers are going up in terms of the, of the um, testing, but in terms of controlling it, we already know where those cases are. They're in my district, in Maya Sparsa's district. You know, those cases are, are up and the loss of life, I'm afraid, are going to continue to climb. And I'm afraid that we're going to continue to bury uh, individuals from my district and families will continue to uh, become devastated. And they will be, you know, I hate to say this, they will be burdens on our system uh, over the next several months, especially as winter comes in and the flu season uh, is upon us. What will we do when we continue to talk about eviction moratoriums? When we continue to talk about food distribution? When we continue to talk about housing issues? These will be families who will have their primary breadwinners, uh, either sick in bed or even worse. Have fallen uh, ill for the rest of their lives or potentially have lost their lives. And so again, uh, I hope that uh, we, we really will advocate to have uh, some of the task force members uh, at this, at, at the table here, having those kind of conversations with the city and with county. Where that collaboration and that communication is taking place and where these decisions are being made. And as this research is being uh, discovered and we're looking at behavior modification that, that folks are being brought into, into this uh, into the loop. And, and we're not hearing about it just, you know, at council, but rather uh, beforehand and we're, and again, where decisions are being made. It, it's I, it's just, it's, it's a devastating virus. It's a devastating virus. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kip, just on the, the theme, you know, I know we're all hearing some of this information for the first time, including me, about, hey, what are we learning? Through some of the work that we're doing is, in addition to the messages that we're providing and the work that Carolina and her team's doing. Can we also provide guidance to community organizations about, hey, this is how we think the message is sticky? This is, this is what, this is what our, our folks are telling us, so that, that they're well informed as well. And it's, it's not just driving our, uh, our messaging, but actually driving the messaging of others as well.
Yes, we can. And I think this is one of the things that I'm most appreciative of the work that Carolina and Colin are, are leading is, you know, in addition to making sure that we have kind of our ducks in a row of the intent of this work is to share this broadly and deeply with, with the people who are, are face to face, who are in the community. You know, Caroline has been very clear that, that the digital messaging is important, but that's one piece of the puzzle. Um, and that making sure that as we, as we put together these kits and packets, that they're available to our community partners, everybody that we're financing. You know, one of the things, uh, that a number of council members have mentioned, for example, is that to take advantage of where people are going, right? So if people are going and picking up, picking up food, uh, we know that they're probably, they're probably uh, o- open to hearing some of the right COVID messages. And so what are, what are those messages and how do they get in as, as they pick up the food? And so what are what are those messages and how do they get in as as they pick up the food? So bottom line is yes, uh w- we we think about this as as part of what we want to do for uh getting these messages out in the community with both the community partners that we're working with on comms, but also the community partners that we're working with across all the services we provide.
Thanks, Kip. Uh Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just one last thing as uh as um some of this behavioral insight data was being discussed, which I thought just was absolutely interesting to learn about. Um I wanted to a- and then you added um the childcare piece. Um uh mayor, i- in terms of maybe why are why isn't our workforce taking advantage of this? And you know, I think, you know, like many parents, um I I don't necessarily know that I represent um many parents, but I I am also very just hesitant about the exposure of um uh other people's circles, their COVID circle, right? Like we've all created now COVID circles that we've agreed with with either our immediate family or a neighbor or whomever um that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna be safe. And this is you you're containing it to a certain degree, right? And your commitment is to contain it to a certain degree. And so I think um with childcare and especially as we roll out some of these new programs, you know, we we call it childcare, it could be onsite um distance learning, it could be, you know, uh the preschool uh program or the Rock and Learn. Uh they they all serve the same pers- purpose, and that's for our families to get back to work or be able to get to to the doctors. And so how can we um create a sense of security for a lot of those parents um to to in order for them to allow for for them to for their children to be part of these programs, especially if it's the first time and they haven't really had any experiences with our Rock and uh and learn programming or any of the other ones. And so one of the things that I just was really um really caught my eye, it was about a week ago. And I've got to say, John, John and and your team, John Ciccarelli and your team, just did a fabulous job in getting a Welch uh distance learning pod set up over there, although I they have some issues with with power now, unfortunately, that
Working on that.
I know, it's it's terrible. And but I just when when I got when they sent me the picture and actually the superintendent um had a visit and she sent me the picture and it just looked great. I mean, it inspires confidence. And I think it's part of the messaging and priming that we need to start setting up now. When we talk about, you know, the the uh creating some some uh behavioral um modification for our community. It's also about priming people um uh in terms of the the safety um and the well-being of our children is is um that that we are um providers of a very safe uh program. And these are, this is the way it looks, right? And so I think part part of our messaging that I think that has um that we haven't really done is um is is visually like have have a visual tour of of this pod learning center, right? And that a parent can actually do a three eighty turn and and feel safe about the distance between their students in this and and the sense of of um of of space between folks. I mean, I think that is part of that's something that's missing, I think, for a lot of families. Is what does this really look like? Because I haven't had this before. I've been to childcare, I've enrolled my kids into the Rock program, but I've done it pre-COVID, not during COVID. And so how can um we instill more confidence in our families so that they can take advantage of this? Because if we don't start doing that right now and we fund um a lot of our home childcare providers so that we can stabilize them and that they can continue to provide their care in their respective homes, then, you know, we we're setting up this this whole field of home childcare providers to fail of if our messaging um doesn't begin now uh to start setting the people up for this, you know, this is the new normal. Uh please take, come take a look tour our 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 pod learning areas and so that people feel um uh safe. And I don't know if there's something that that can be done within the group that's already exploring what messages stick more or speak uh the most uh to some of the community. But I think there there um I think it would be a good investment for us to figure out what speaks to parents so that we can uh figure out um how best to um support our home childcare providers as well. Not only are are um Rock uh and Learn programs. I think uh the city of San Jose has a- already built in a sense of respect and and sense of trust with a lot of community because our programs have just uh really speak for themselves, right? Um and they're they're great word of mouth recommendations. But at this point, I think we need to start um having different kind of messaging out there um in terms of what we we think is going to be the new normal from here until probably the end of next year. Who knows? You know, I I I hope that it'll it'll look different. Um and so that maybe that can open up uh more opportunities for our parents to to participate. So that's all I wanted to really share and see if there is any um opportunity for us to do that. Kip, I think it's under your wing or maybe Carolina. Is that something that's still um a possibility for us to figure out what kind of messaging will work for parents?
I think it's a good, I think it's a good point. And I think part of what I'll ask John to weigh in on is sort of how we're getting feedback, both from the people who are attending and also from from the the folks we're trying to reach out to. Because I know he's been very, he and his team have been very thoughtful about that.
Thanks, Kip. Um and thank you, Councilmember Arenas, for the compliment. Um I love the idea of of doing the virtual tours because I agree, when you when you see the setups, they they make you smile. Um and the and the kids are enjoying it, you know, so I think it's a great way to market. Um and you know, maybe it doesn't have to be a lot of special words because, you know, pictures, pictures, a thousand words, right? People see it, you can feel more comfortable about it. So thanks for that idea. Um so uh um in terms of the marketing, Caroline is not as involved because she's in the E P I O. Um so we have, we have different marketing staff filling in her role within PRNS. Um but uh we would like to see enrollment improve, certainly. Um you know, we have a uh well, theoretical capacity of about five hundred and fifty. And right now we're in the in the mid one hundred, so there's clearly space available. Um so, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and and I know that there's another uh um a a different type of strategy that works for our um hardest to reach communities. And John, you and I have already spoken this at different times, but just so for the benefit of the rest of the council members um who weren't there at our NSC meeting, I know that um for like uh Welch Community Center, we had a really difficult time filling in the first cycle. Um not because we didn't have enough children, I think simply because our hardest to reach communities, th- this was serving the hardest to reach communities and it was um really difficult to connect with them. Um because those communities are used to having an onsite registration, having more of a a person to person connection. Um and and that wasn't available. And so we really had to wait until school started uh more or less so that we can get connected to some of the the parents and the students that way. And so I think that's the other, that's the other strategy that or the other um factor that that we need to consider when we're um looking at what works for our communities. And I think there's a, you know, a very general public strategy. And then there is a another, a very specific strategy that that should um uh be ta- tailored for our hardest to reach communities. Um because those are the folks, like I've said in the past, they're going to be the last ones to come um to enroll. Um and then, you know, the space is 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 going to be exhausted and and they're not going to have the same options. And so um I just think we need to continue to just integrate that as part of what we do from here on is, you know, two two levels of of uh communication, one for our general public and one for our hard to reach uh communities.
Kip, Councilmember, if I could, just to make sure that I'm 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 catching it, and I think I am. But I I think we think of it as a yes and, right? One is that we're gonna, we're gonna do good general communication and and folks who are digitally literate and connected can get the message. And we're going to basically do three things with with our our more harder, uh uh more vulnerable communities. One, we're going to make sure that the messaging is is getting to them where they are. And sometimes that's digital and sometimes that's in person. Two, we're going to think about how they navigate that system because it may be harder uh to navigate than 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 they need and they need need some help navigating. And three, we're going to think about what do we hold in reserve so that if 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 it does get snapped up by by other folks that we've got a back, a kind of a backlog ready for them. So so we're thinking about it, yes, and one, two, three, in that way is is the way we're thinking about this strategy. And Carolina and uh has a big role in that, but we're also trying to do that across the different services that we're delivering from the pods uh to the other ones as well.
Yes, thank you, Kip. And uh exactly, you and I have had this conversation as well. And so I think it just, you know, when when the mayor brought it up uh in terms of why are people using childcare? I think it's a really important um question um to pose, to try to figure that out. Um because I think our services are just, you know, um we do this very well. You know, recreation is something that we do very, very well. And I and I think if people just knew about it, they would come forward a little bit uh more. Um and maybe our employees are slightly different. Um but I know for our community, uh those are the the strategies that I was alluding to and I think you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Sparsen?
Thank you. Um I actually wasn't going to speak, but hearing the the behavioral study information for the first time um prompted me to speak today. And and Kip, we are going to get that information, is that correct?
Uh yes, we've we've actually presented an early cut of it back in a three point one. It might have gotten lost in some of the shuffle um because there's a lot going on. So I'll get you, I'll get you. We did, we did an initial tranche with that right at the beginning.
Yeah, I have that, yeah.
Yeah, and and then we're going to, we're going to be doing a second round coming forward. And I'll make sure, I think I want to do two things going forward. One, we'll make sure as we get that information that that gets out to council uh both in a three one one and an info memo. And I I think we'll also to uh be circulating these decks with some of the notes that we have, to the extent that that's useful. So the answer is yes, Councilmember, we will.
Yes, I have that PowerPoint that you presented and and it it doesn't have the level of detail that you just described earlier.
Yeah, we've got a couple of click, click downs on the data and we can, we can provide the additional.
So um so I think that would be really important. And um and so I just, you know, wanted to add one thing. And I I know city staff is busting their butts on a lot of different things and different situations that are ever evolving. And we have COVID and we've had power shut offs and we've had wildfires and we've had air quality. Um you know, we've had a number of um of things go on um that we as a city have had to respond to. Um and I know that every, there isn't a part of the city that hasn't been touched by COVID in one way. Um you know, having said that, there are some parts of the city where it is being felt a whole lot more. Um I represent two zip codes or portion of most of nine five one two two, which is the number one zip code for cases of COVID and nine five one one one, which is the fourth um hardest hit part of the entire county when it comes to COVID. And these um these differences are getting wider and wider and wider, right? And so we, COVID is not going away. I think we've all realized that. Um I I know that on March sixteenth, we had hoped that it would be different, but I think the reality is sinking in. Um and that reality is that we are balancing economic needs. We're balancing um neighborhood needs and we're balancing, frankly, life and death situations. COVID is still an issue and it's impacting some places and some families worse than others. And we must prioritize life and health and safety first. And and so I just wanted to remind everyone of that, that that is still happening. And um yes, there are a whole number of things that must go on. And 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 trust me, I I I was saying earlier that I feel really hammered right now. Um uh like I know what city staff are, but I I feel hammered where every day I'm having to choose which situation is the most dire. Right? My my part of the city, along with Councilmember Arenas is and Councilmember Dieps and Alviso have the worst census response rates in the county, right? And thank God, we have an amazing PRNS staff that is going out door to door um in addition to our own staff. Um and so I already have a district that's being hammered in so many other ways. But my team actually is out right now um out in the community to ensure that parts of my district aren't erased. And so every day it's a series of which is worse, right? And some of these um parts of the city are also hit with quality of life issues that are sanitation issues. Um I have some, in fact, talk about a picture worth a thousand words. I have parts of the city that are unrecognizable as being parts of San Jose to some folks. And so um I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm I'm just as eager to return to normal, whatever the heck that is anymore. Um but we have to remember that we have, are we are still dealing with a lot of life and safety issues. And that as we move forward with whatever normal is, that that we balance those health and safety issues. Um you know, that that we have across the city as we bring programs back in the city online, that we do prioritize public safety issues, health and safety issues as we bring them back. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I believe those are all the questions. Um and Kip, thank you again for your willingness to offer um those insights to to all of us. Could I just also just add that, you know, what is useful? Um that is what is effective communication is important to know, but it's also important for us, I think, to know what is not effective. And what you guys said about, you know, for example, the threat that you'll get caught, for example, isn't that effective? I think that's super important for us to know as we're all messaging. So thank you for sharing all that with us.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, uh we'll move on then. Uh anything further, Dave?
No, that's that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um item three point nine is an extension of proclamation of local emergency. Your motion?
Yes, thank you, council and uh mayor. So I'm here before you. I I recognize a lot of ground has been covered over the last several hours. Uh I don't want to repeat any of that. The item before you is a request for extension to the current local emergency proclamation for COVID nineteen. As the council is well aware, this action not only is required by government code, more importantly, it helps to enable and facilitate all the great work being done by the city in confronting uh this emergency. In addition to the comprehensive timeline, today's report provides information on items already touched upon by Kip and others uh like the state's updated COVID tier system as well as highlighting those communities most impacted by the pandemic. This proclamation extension will be in effect for sixty days and will expire on November twentieth, two thousand uh twenty. And we will return to council, city council on or before November seventeenth, two thousand twenty with a request to continue the local emergency if needed.
Thank you. We'll go to the public. Tessa Woodman C.
Ah yes, thank you for your patience. Thank you for listening to me. Really appreciate that. I am a teacher of democracy. My name is Tessa Woodman C. My email is clean air S J, clean air, which we don't have in San Jose. Cleanairsj@gmail.com. I have a YouTube with my scientist husband and myself, a a master's in mass communication and education on YouTube. It's called Cougar W. That's my husband, Cougar W on YouTube. And we only talk about climate change. And we're talking about the science because he's a scientist. And then I talk about the social issues. So that's it, Cougar W on YouTube. However, thank you for not shutting me off. Because I am a democracy teacher. I'm looking at what you're doing and how it's going. And there are some problems in it. One, I think my hand being up needs to be recorded. So if it goes down, you can still, yes.
Only hearing public comment on the extension of the proper.
Okay, of the, okay, of, okay, thank you. Thank you for keeping me on on track of that because really the issue is climate crisis. We're talking about the COVID nineteen crisis. But the news from um our Prince Charles of Wales is the climate crisis is what we have to focus on. And it will, the COVID nineteen will pale. And it will, the COVID-19 will pale in front of COVID, in front of climate change.
You might be correct, but it's still the case that we're only hearing public comment.
Okay, I know, and you keep correcting. And this is the problem, is that the powers that be are controlling the dialogue. And it is very painful, because this is what we need to talk about, is climate change has to be the number one thing.
Mr. Baikman?
Hi, thank you. To give a bit of context, you know, I want to talk about how this emergency status has been placed for another two months. You know, I am not the most knowledgeable guy in the world about these things. But, you know, I'm trying to balance, you know, what we can talk about with this issue, what's possible with this issue. I mean, there is a real threat of the condition happening to people. And yet, at the same time, you know, what are ways that we can, you know, understand that? And I'm just really, I'm fairly adamant, you know, that, you know, that there's been ideas of how, you know, we need to have a, you know, 12-month, you know, emergency declaration into, say, April of 2021, compared to month-to-month status. I feel it's really important that we have vaccination capabilities now. We need to really respect that and work towards that. I've been hearing, you know, we can't have vaccinations till next summer, and that's really hurtful to hear. And I hope we can make the efforts to at least have a vaccination process by the end of this year. And I know, I know that takes work and coordination. And I think I'm a person who's trying to be really patient to this whole process. And so I'm making my voice clear on that issue. And I'm really, you know, to try to say it again, I really, I'm hoping for positive sustainability ideas in this time of UN dialogue. And, you know, the accountability with technology ideas that I work on, you know, is the way an everyday person can address the UN themselves and say, look, we've got these good projects and plans going. Why can't you participate in sustainability ideas as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Returning to council, is there a motion? Councilmember Sparsen?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring something up. So the last time an extension came before us, I asked that it recognize, because I think, so this, this declaration and the extension serves a purpose. It serves a legal purpose, it serves a financial purpose. On top of that, it serves as a record of, of the situation. And I had asked last time that it include more information about the impact of this local emergency on San Jose. And I don't see those changes. And so I'm going to ask once again that those do get recorded in the future. And I'll give you an example. For, for example, right now, today, the 95122 zip code in San Jose has more COVID cases than the entire, entire city of Gilroy. And so as we record some of these, we need to really think about how this record is going to live on. Because the fact is, I'm missing an acknowledgement in it, in the language. And, and again, I just wanted to bring that up, because it's an important record of what's going on in our community. And with that, I'll.
Councilmember, I just want to make sure, we certainly took that to heart. I think we did include, actually, we made kind of an overhaul of the, the extension. So if we've missed the mark there, well, but we certainly took it to heart and made adjustments to the extension of the proclamation. Kip, is anything you wanted to add to that?
I see those testing sites that were added. I do see that.
We added specific reference to the zip codes, to the disproportionate impact by race, and some of, some of those concerns that, that were directed to us to make sure we're included. If it, we, if we didn't sufficiently cover it, or there are different ways that we should cover it, we're very open to that feedback. But that was our intent with the revision. I don't have the document open in front of me, but I remember reviewing it very clearly for just exactly that.
Okay, I do, I don't see it. So I do appreciate that, and I'm happy to talk offline. I did see the testing that was included. I did see some of that. And, because I have it open right here. So anyway, I look forward to talking offline and appreciate your attention on this. Thank you. And with that, I'll move to the group. Second.
Thank you. On the motion, let's vote.
Menas? Menas? Paralas?
Aye.
Diop?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Sparsa?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Bulleye?
Aye.
Camus? Camus? Jones?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, this is Johnny.
Got it.
And I, thank you. All right, so we're on to the consent calendar. Given the time, what I, I think there are several items to be polled. Why don't we try to get through consent, and then we'll take a break for dinner? Does that, does that make sense? Okay, we'll do that. The consent calendar, there's several items to be polled. Let me identify four, 2.2, 2.7, 2.12, and 2.17. Are there any other items that council members would like to pull? Feel free to raise your hand or just blurt it out.
Could you repeat that again, please, Mayor?
Yeah, 2.2, 2.7, 2.12, and 2.17. Are there any other items to be pulled? Okay, so what we'll do is, let's hear, comment on consent at first, Mr. Baikman.
Hi, I think all my items actually don't speak to any polled items today. Thank you. I'll speak now. The approval of council and committee minutes today date back to the fall of 2019, for interest. As part of the many community and policing issues we all need to consider over the next few months and years. Again, I hope we, you can think about, there are currently 60-plus shot spotter speakers placed throughout the entire various of Bart Station as an intimidating warning to those who arrive from the, around the SFA area. The ideas and concepts of defund and de-middleitarization need to be a part of the overall ideas of reimagining and reform at this time. We are simply at a time to consider ideas of peace and not war, to define our future of community sustainability, and that 10 shot spotters in the various of North San Jose Bart Station can work just as well as the current 60-plus. To work in these terms can also show ideas of better communication and trust of ourselves as a local community, and trust in what to expect and how to work for the, all the people of the SFA area as well. With item 2.11, traffic signal flow tech, I hope you worked out city government problems and can again communicate to the public how this tech is progressing each month throughout the city. I thank you, maybe in order for item 2.12, and agreements with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Firm to talk about the transportation ideas for the future of San Jose. There's specific wording to want to involve the ideas of equity. And that from this, I'm hopeful San Jose city government staff may want to explore ideas of better accountability and more open public policy ideas with IoT and tech needs. Thank you. As tech accountability and open public policy is incredibly decent and inexpensive way to develop important concepts of equity, and that can interestingly give good examples to many San Jose ethnicities, cultures, and income levels. With my final eight seconds, I'm learning ideas about how, I'll talk more about the subject in my final.
Thank you. Tessa Woodman-C?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to talk about city travel reports. Because what I'm addressing is that we have to look at everything we do. This is, no, it's not me. Now it is, it is the, our Prince Charles is saying we have to reduce our, our emissions to zero by 2030. That's 10 years. Okay, we have a lot of work to do, okay? And one of the things we have to look at in our city council is the travel reports. Because this is where we could be spending money that we shouldn't be. And we have to look at that. Everything has to be looked at in terms of fossil fuel emissions to zero in 10 years. You know, this is our challenge. He calls it a military challenge. He calls it a martial plan. My husband is a scientist who says it has to be done by 2025. He says it's a Manhattan Project. And the martial plan is how the US helped the world. The Amazon is burning. So we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, and we have to focus on climate change, because that is the issue. And it's from Prince Charles. It's no longer crazy Tessa Woodman-C, okay? It isn't me. That's degradation. We have done that. We have done denial, and he talks about it. We've done denial, degradation, and delay in terms of climate change. And he says we can't do that anymore. And that's what Donald Trump has done. He degrades people who talk about it, because he's really not very smart. We have to follow the science. Oh, now you're cutting me off. Are you cutting me off? All right, I don't know what happened. But anyway, thank you for still letting me be there. Science, we have to follow the science, and public health is number one. I appreciate all the women that have talked today about health and community. And that's something else I want to discuss in there. There was also something about neighborhood services. We need to create resilient neighborhoods, and I need your help, because I've got a great idea about how to create resilient neighborhoods. We need to know everybody who's in our community. That's how we help seniors. We need to have their phone numbers and their cell phones, and that's what we, and their emails. Thank you.
Casey Fitzgerald? Casey Fitzgerald, we're not able to hear you right now. Your device appears to be muted. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat the question?
Just wanted to indicate we're able to hear you now. Would you like to speak on consent? On the consent calendar?
No, I don't wish to speak our consent. Thank you.
Okay. Matthew Reed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to speak to item 2.2. I, we really appreciate the mayor bringing some of the items from the commercial linkage fee back to set a timeline for staff to review them and come back so that they can be added to the ordinance. Had a little bit of concern about the language. My, my understanding of the amendment that, that was accepted from councilmember Camus's memo was that staff had to do an analysis of the feasibility within the studies that existed of increasing the exempt square footage for small office from 40,000 to 50,000. And that in the, the memo attached to this item, I believe that it misrepresented what council's action was. And that staff still needs to figure out if that fits within the model that they had. And I just wanted to make sure it was clear that staff had been directed to figure out whether or not that was feasible within the material that they had, rather than to simply be expected to come back with the implementation framework. Thank you.
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 5140?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff Davis for bringing up the issues regarding stolen cars. And I, I think that the response from the city was completely terrible. Should be able to see if a car is stolen. If they can tow your car or give you a ticket, they can also find out if it's stolen or not. And I really want to, you know, thank Dev for that, because usually, most council members don't care anything about things like that. My car was stolen. It sat derelict for a whole month. Neighbors called. Nobody came out until a community service guy came out. He got ahold of me, but the insurance claim was already paid. It was a complete disaster. Don't tell me that the city can't find out if your car is stolen. That's the biggest lie I've ever heard of. I mean, she, the woman who does the parking tickets and the towing, she should run for politics, because she lies really well. I almost believed it for a second. It's a disgrace that how many cars are getting stolen in San Jose. San Jose PD washes their hands like Pontius Pilate over, over a stolen car. It's terrible, and you guys, you guys need to get your act together with it. If you can tell me, if you can give me a ticket, you can find out if the car is stolen. I don't get, I don't care what city employee it is, they can, they can direct it to San Jose PD. If they can't do that, then they shouldn't be able to ticket you. They shouldn't be able to tow you. They shouldn't be able to do anything if they can't find out if a car is stolen. Tell that woman in parking, she's full of shit.
On any item, okay, you're out of luck. Jeffrey Buchanan?
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Speaking to item 2.2, with so many San Joseans facing the potential risk of eviction in early 2021, it's not clear why we should be rushing staff to finalize proposals for deeper cuts to the already low commercial linkage fee, which could result in fewer resources to address our affordable housing needs. Certainly, housing and OED staff amid the current emergency facing tenants, landlords, and small businesses have many higher priorities to tackle than conducting additional analysis to provide public subsidy to certain commercial developers. We urge you not to rush this analysis around these subsidies and allow staff to bring back these proposals at the appropriate time. We also think it's worth noting that these, as, as was discussed during the council meeting, these proposals appear to be public subsidy under the public workforce standards. And so would, would assume that developers taking advantage of these kinds of cuts would be applying the public workforce standard, given what we've seen in the feasibility reports to date. While we certainly need to take every measure to reduce GHG, it's important to remember as families are displaced as a result of commercial development, we're likely to see a spatial mismatch between where families are pushed out to and where jobs are. In addition, the likelihood of working families who are displaced seeing, more likely owning older model cars, likely leading to greater greenhouse gases from that displacement. So while sustainability is very important in reducing our greenhouse gases, reducing our VMT, providing too large of a subsidy for certain types of developers that adopt environmental standards, we need to take these things into consideration. Additionally, there's some developers who may choose to take advantage of AB900 legislation, which requires certain environmental provisions. We should make sure that we're not subsidizing things that are already required under, developers choosing to take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council. First, why don't we take on the individual items that are pulled? I think we can move through them, and where there is, appears to be some dissenting view, we can simply take a vote and then vote on the remainder that are unanimous. So item 2.2 is one that I asked to be pulled. I have a memorandum that I've submitted, asking for staff to essentially land the plane with regard to some of the items that council approved. Matthew Reed indicated that paragraph one may have misstated whatever the council actually approved. And so I'd be happy to support a motion that would simply say that obviously, the council's prior direction would be governing if there's any distinction between that, any difference between whatever the council approved and whatever is in my memo. So let's come back to council. Is there anyone like to speak on this? Or make a motion?
Can you restate that, Mayor, please?
Yeah, so the memorandum that I've submitted dated today on the final adoption ordinances on the commercial linkage fee, to whatever extent anything that is represented in that memorandum is different than what council approved on that item, then the prior council approval would control. That would be my suggestion as a modified motion if someone were willing to make that. Councilor Sparsen?
So then I have a question for the city clerk and/or the city attorney in terms of, because this memo came out today. So have, have they, either of them had a chance to look at the contents of the memo to compare it to the record?
Vera's online, and I'll ask Vera to respond to that, since she was involved in doing that work. Vera?
Thank you. I'm unmuting myself. Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Great. No, I reviewed the original, the original motion that council made. Great. No, I reviewed the original, the original motion that council made, which was very complex on September 1. There was no timeline for staff to return. So really what the mayor's memo adds, at least to those items that are listed there, is a timeline for staff to return to council. And I believe the memo says January 31 of 2021. There were also other items, but they're not being addressed today, where where staff is to return with a new feasibility study and related next study as well. But for this, this adds timelines that were not there before.
Yeah, and that's consistent with, I guess, my intent here. I didn't mean to suggest that the timeline was part of the council approval. The point was that the timeline would be something that we would with this action.
Okay, and so then this would be a question. I'm assuming with Kim or with you, Mayor, in terms of your thoughts around behind this timeline. And then Kim is also on here in terms of her thoughts on the timeline. It's seems like a minor
Yeah, Kelly Klein and our team reached out to Nancy Klein, no relation, to ask what was feasible and response that late January was a reasonable period of time.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I'm comfortable with that. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion then on 2.2. For purposes of expediency, perhaps what we'll do is move on to 2.7 unless anyone would like to express any dissenting view at this point. Okay, well, and then we can take all the votes together. I'm trying to figure out how we can do this. Well, maybe it makes sense just to go ahead and vote.
Mayor had a question about the particular item we're discussing. If that's okay. So I think I don't have your memo in front of me. I had to step out of the office, but I'm on my iPad. I think on there it touches on fee reductions as relates to environmental design or something or other. Is that is that? I think that was part of what we originally passed, and that was with the majority. I voted for it.
Yeah, that was the intent, was that we would
So one of the things, one of the things that came to mind, and it was pointed out to me by my staff after the meeting, is that I think the city attorney's office or even the housing department might have had some some thoughts on that, some concerns, I think, as it relates to the fees. And so I was wondering if there was anyone in the city attorney's office comment on that.
And if I could just jump in on this, and I'm fine if the city attorney's office come back comes back and says, hey, guess what? Under the mitigation act, we can't be offering fee reductions in that category. We just want to call the question. In other words, we want there to be certainty by late January about what is or is not in. And so we're aware there are issues and we just want those issues to be resolved.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that as long as, you know, obviously it gets vetted through the proper channels and the attorneys chime in as to whether it's possible or not. I suspect and I would hope that to the extent it's not, it'll be pointed out to us and we can proceed from that point forward. Anyhow, I thought it was important to mention because I didn't mention it last time.
Sure. And Vera nor I want to add anything. Certainly, go for you. Otherwise, we'll hear you out.
That certainly would, if it's not feasible, that certainly would be pointed out or not or not legal. Vera, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to state that if there are also available options, we'd like to give them to you to consider as well, as always.
All right.
And it may be that we need to flush this out a little bit more with council when we come back in terms of, you know, what you need to do and what you want to do.
Right. Okay, thank you. Why don't we then take a vote on 2.2? Unless there's anyone else like to speak? Okay, let's vote on 2.2.
Yes.
Hi.
Yep.
Hi.
Moscow.
I voted against this originally. I'm going to continue to vote against it.
Thank you. Davis?
I.
Ms. Barza?
I.
Arenas? Arenas? Bulley?
I.
Camus?
I.
Jones?
I.
Liccardo?
I.
Tony, it's Sylvia. Hi.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 2.7 is a settlement agreement mutual lease between Cedars Place, also known as Bay 101, and the city of San Jose. I simply wanted to register dissenting vote on this item. So I assume that means we need to vote on it separately. Is that right?
Yes.
So I'm voting no for the reasons I've articulated previously, and that I don't support the expansion of gaming in San Jose because of the many serious social impacts of gaming expansion. And this has been well documented and studied. So if there's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, on the motion, let's vote.
Manas?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Yep.
Hi.
Moscow? I. Davis?
I.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Bulley?
I.
Camus?
I.
Jones?
Hi.
Liccardo?
No. Thank you. Item 2.7, I'm sorry, 2.12, excuse me, is the item relating to a contract with a consultant that is Nelson Nygaard on Emerging Mobility Action Plan. And John, thank you for joining us. And anybody like Ramsey's like to respond. Here's my concern. I'm grateful that we've got this grant money to go do a study. It just seems as though that the focus of the study is very broad, very high level. I'm not sure it's going to result in actionable. It's going to result in something that's actionable. In other words, be helpful to know what specific decisions we think will actually be driven by the information that's that's provided through this effort. And so what I wanted to just, while you're thinking about the answer to that question, what are the specific decisions? I wanted to suggest and ask if you had considered a more narrowly focused effort. And particularly when we think about specific objectives, I mean, for example, in the next two years, we're going through what will be a significant cut in transit service. We know we've already seen it with VTA, for example, and that's going to leave a lot of transit dependent residents high and dry. And so looking at, for example, you know, could we somehow or another get a cooperative off the ground to help low income families be able to get access to electric vehicles or electric micro mobility in some way? You know, and having a consultant really be able to dig in and help us make progress on those specific questions, it seems to me would would enable us, at least enable me to feel a lot more content that this money is being well spent and getting to something that's going to deliver benefit for a resident. So I just wanted to throw that out and be interested in your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good question. John Russo, Director of Transportation. Yeah, well, we always try to, when we are going after a grant, when we have something in mind that we need to learn something about or to prepare for, such as this one, this was a competitive grant that we won from the state. So what this is, is trying to get us ready for a very rapidly changing transportation environment. You know, as you've seen in the council scene, we have seen electric mobility types of devices in the city and lots more coming that we're actually not even aware of yet. So this is going to help us with potentially changes in Muni code ordinances, some best practices that we're going to be able to learn from other cities. One of the major components of this is the mobility data set that we're trying to also work, which is a data that we're trying to keep track of a lot of these new emerging technologies. So we definitely look at that. I think that some of those suggestions or the comments that you had, we're actually trying to do in in other ways in some of the electronic mobility plan that we're working on, which is trying to get some of these new technologies out to other parts of the community that don't normally get them. So we're trying to address that in a number of different ways. This one is really going to help us to try to get a handle on all of these new technologies that are coming our way, some that are still on the drawing board. Ramzes is here. If there's, he probably has some things to add to it, but these are the kind of things that we've seen other cities. Los Angeles is one that we've taken some some notes on in terms of they've done this before and we needed, we used this as an example or them as an example, but we wanted to get accomplished with this one. So I'll I'll let Ramzes fill in some of the blanks, but these are the kind of things that we think we need to do just to keep up with these new technologies coming our way.
Thank you, Director Stowe, and great question, Mayor. Ramzes Medu, DOT. Yeah, I mean, I think, but the what are we trying to solve with this? What kind of decisions are we going to try to make with this? What kinds of policies and actions are we going to bring through this work? Well, we have electric, we have electric scooters in the streets. We have more and more shared devices that want to come to market. We have drones that look like they're going to come into the skies. And we have all of these different new technological items that are coming in that are generally classed as emerging mobility. These things are potentially very beneficial to residents and also potentially pretty negatively impactful. Drones being one of the ones that really could be loud, could be could fall on people, all these kinds of things. And so what we're hoping to do with this, or what we will do with this, is take what's already a developing kind of body of work in LA and other cities and localize that and then, you know, kind of extend that thinking in there and then localize it to San Jose, right? And we're taking very particularly a equity lens. There's this large portion of this work that is specifically focused on reaching out to folks who usually don't get involved in these kinds of discussions and trying to figure out, okay, what is it that we need to do to make sure that we get exactly? I mean, I thought your idea was great, right? This is how do we get low income folks access to these things as as transit potentially falls away? We hope that doesn't happen. We hope we're going to fight for that and get that to work. But yeah, there's a lot of holes there. Part of our problem is we don't always know what they are, right? We keep, we hear a lot from council members across go and as far as that we really spend a long time not hearing enough from those areas in the city. So we need to do. And when, as we do that, we're going to be crafting policies around how spread of these kinds of devices needs to be done across the city, how the city can help form ordinances around how these things can operate and all and the like, right? So that's kind of the purview of it. To some degree, it's also a little bit of a tracking piece of work, right? If we all remember what happened with scooters, they just showed up. And we didn't really know what to do. We learned a lot from that experience and that experience birthed the Open Mobility Foundation, which we helped start with Los Angeles. Thanks, Mayor Liccardo, for helping spearhead that. And that foundation now controls a data specification called MDS, Mobility Data Specification, which now is a international standard, which we have, we are on the board of running. And it is now kind of a, you know, international policy. We intend, we are intending to continue that type of thinking. We specifically have scoped additions to that standard that help us do things like express policy and add new devices to the list of things that can be used in that data specification. So we're currently already working a little bit on robotic delivery drones. As you might see, the Kiwi bots are running around downtown. And so we're trying to add that in. We need some more resources to kind of bring that in. So we're using the grant to help us extend our ability to regulate and monitor kind of what's happening in these spaces. So it's kind of, it is broad, you're right. But I think we're, this will be a very valuable piece of work for us to keep up with a world that that is kind of very quickly changing.
Okay, thank you, Ramzes. All right, well, I guess I know I'm not as in the weeds as you guys are, obviously, in understanding how this study can really help us move forward. So I'm going to take your word for it. I'm just hopeful that when this work is done, the $600,000 is spent in this grant money. What we'll come back with is something that'll have a direct impact in our ability to improve mobility, particularly for those who are struggling and unable to be able to get access to whether it's transit or other modes. So I look forward to seeing the results, but I'm hopeful above all that it is really actionable. Are there any other comments on this item before we move forward? Okay. Is there a motion on this item 2.12?
So moved. Sorry.
Okay. Actually, I just realized I don't expect either of these next two items to be controversial. So perhaps we can take them all together. So let's, before we vote on that item, why don't we move on to 2.17, which is approval of National Literacy Month, community event. Councilmember Arenas?
Yes, this is definitely not controversial because everybody loves to read and we do it every week for this wonderful council meeting. So September is National Literacy Month, and it's an opportunity for us to just celebrate the power of reading, power of book. And now that we're all sheltered in place at home, it can allow us to travel to different countries to laugh and cry and discover and learn all from the comfort of our own home. And as you all know, parents, we always look out for the proficiency, reading proficiency by third grade is one of the things that I looked at when my child was going through school and he's now in sixth grade. That this is one of the most significant predictors, whether a kiddo is going to be able to graduate from high school or find a successful career later on in his life. However, not all families have equal access to books. And so that's why I wanted to talk about that today. In the city of San Jose, we have an invaluable resource like the San Jose Public Library. And they continue to provide books for our San Jose families during shelter in place. And it's an express pickup service. We also have a lot of eBooks on files. So please go check out our San Jose library. Lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have this wonderful author in District Eight. And this is Mr. Khalid Hosseini. And he's written a book that you might have read before, and it's The Kite Runner and Sea Prayer. He's been recognized across the world for just their powerful depiction of family loss and experiences of immigrant and refugees. He has a foundation that provides shelter, education, healthcare to displaced families in Afghanistan, providing nearly 2.2 million in grants. And so I'd like to just share a brief message for Mr. Hosseini about himself and the power of reading. I think you'll all enjoy.
I am Khalid Hosseini, and I want to thank council members Sylvia Arenas and everyone on the city council for proclaiming National Literacy Month at City Council and for inviting me to say a couple of words about why reading and storytelling still matter. And perhaps the need for books and stories has actually never felt more urgent than now in these times of strife and dissent when we're feeling disconnected from one another, both physically because of COVID and ideologically. The fact is that we are a species that's hardwired for metaphor. Stories are the instruments through which we forge meanings of our lives. And storytelling is at the heart of all human endeavor and social change. We use stories to communicate human values in a way that permits another person to see the relevance of that story to his or her own existence. When we read a book, we expand our sense of community. The world opens up to us and we feel empathy. We find solace in one another and we understand one another better. Books have a way of getting through to us in places that are hard to reach. And in these difficult times, when it's so important that we see ourselves in one another, books are perhaps more valuable than ever before. Thank you for proclaiming National Literacy Month, and thank you for giving me a chance to say a couple of words on this issue. Please be well and stay safe. Thank you.
Well, that was cool. Khalid Hosseini, yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Arenas. We'll have to talk offline, figure out how you got him on video. That's pretty neat. All right. Great to see. Any comments on this item? All right. And I think everyone probably does know that Khalid Hosseini actually lived in San Jose and wrote in part about some of his experiences here, which is a great source of pride for all of us. All right, then the motion, Councilmember Arenas? Oh, actually, you know, why don't we do this? Could I suggest that there be a motion to 2.12, 2.17, and all the remaining consent items that we haven't voted on?
I was going to just modify my motion to include all of the other items. Does that work, Sam?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's okay with the Secretary? It's okay with the second?
Yes, I think I was the second. I'm not sure.
I think so. Okay, let's vote.
Arenas?
Aye.
Prowlis?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Bulleye?
Aye.
Camus?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, it's now 5:30. So why don't we take a one hour break? We'll return from dinner at 6:30 to resume our work. And we're going to jump right into a riveting discussion of an audit of development fees. So of course, you need that.